One hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Is there a second? Second on the payroll warrant?
I have a question on it.
Okay, well, we'll need a second to, for a discussion.
A second.
In a second.
Okay, so...
Discussion, go ahead Kathy.
Yeah, so I noticed that in a quick review of it, that the administrative coordinator hours are at like thirty-seven hours, not twenty-five. We don't have salary for that, for those hours, and I don't see how this is being approved since the Board of Selectmen never voted this, to work extra hours.
Well, she, uh, she did contact me that she was out of hours and it was additional work to be done. And, uh, this was, Kathy, maybe you can just weigh in on that. When did this end? This ended Thursday?
Yeah, and they added hours work for the emergency IT problem.
Okay, well, as, uh, as everybody knows, the, uh, the computer system went down on, uh, I think I had it here, uh, the computer system went down and, uh, went down on, computer system went down on Wednesday. It didn't come back up until Thursday night. And she was out of hours at that time. The, the company was in Town Hall. They couldn't be left in Town Hall by themselves. Kathy was here. Uh, I believe she was here till like midnight on, uh, Wednesday. I happened to go by Wednesday afternoon. She was, her vehicle was out there. But they got it back up and running. So they, at the time, the, the Town Website was down, the email was down. And, um, she worked with the company, the, uh, computer company, got it back up. So she had asked if they could, okay, they could be approved, if she needed to, uh, she needed to do that work. And she did. She did a great job with it, as did the company. So that's, uh, that's one of the reasons for that.
I'm looking at that week. I'm looking at, it goes Friday to Thursday. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Tuesday, seven AM to four PM. I mean, we've never, this is why I asked to have it on the agenda. We need to vote the working hours of our employees. Friday, four to six PM. The Town Hall's not even open. And then Saturday, the twenty-first, four hours. I just, we need to standardize this. This is not fair because all of our other employees are working, seems, within the hours that we all are familiar with. And I just feel that I have no knowledge of this and we've never voted to, to give that authority. We voted that, um, non-exempt or whatever can have comp time if they work additional hours. We do have a policy on that, so we can give hours back. That we did vote on. This, we have not voted on, so.
Well, we're going to, that's what the committee is, is a committee that, I don't know who's on that committee.
I was, no, what I asked for was an agenda item for tonight, and I think I'll ask for it under old business because we have talked about reopening the Town Hall. And let's vote the working hours of the positions that hours were changed at town meetings. That would be the accountant, the assistant treasurer, and the administrative coordinator. And let's just vote those hours, so we know what days they're working and what hours.
Just to, uh, just to remind you, uh, I know you would ask to, uh, to put on for, uh, Monday night hours on the, on this agenda. But the last meeting, uh, on eight sixteen, uh, we had, uh, we had tabled that until, uh, September thirteenth. So it will be, uh, on the agenda for September thirteenth.
Point of misinformation. No, I asked for us to address the reopening of the Town Hall, which is the Friday, that I didn't realize that some are still working remote, and we had voted to open the Town Hall. So in order to open it, we need to vote the hours of our town employees, so we know more or less what days and hours they're working, because right now, um, there should be no further stipend for the administrative coordinator, because that had a thirty-day time limit on it. That's done. And I think this board needs to determine how to allocate the administrative coordinator hours so that we stay within the budget. We can't, I don't know where you think, where do you think the money is coming from to pay for all the extra hours?
Uh, we'll work that out with the town accountant, but to bring up the, to bring up the fact about the hours, the hours for the employees that here in Town Hall are posted on the door out front, and they're posted on the Town Website.
And they're incorrect. That's why I'm asking to straighten them out and make them correct, because I've gotten complaints from residents, and I've looked at it and the residents are correct. The hours are wrong. It says that our selectmen's office is open from eight AM to eight PM. It's not. We have a twenty-five-hour administrative coordinator.
Yes, and isn't that, isn't that what the committee, I think it's Jason and, um, and Dan McDonald, were on the committee to, uh, uh, look at that. Uh, Jason, is that, can you weigh in on that? Weren't you and Dan meeting on that?
Yes, we've met once and, uh, we're working on scheduling an additional meeting.
And I think you did have one meeting.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I contacted you and I went through the list of items for the agenda and you approved them, and I sent them to the administrative coordinator. And one of the items was to continue the reopening of the Town Hall and set the working hours. And I respectfully request that that be addressed at this meeting.
Well, it, uh, uh, I received that information. You gave me a call on the phone. Uh, and I spoke with the administrative assistant. And it was my interpretation that it was on the Monday night hours. Uh, but if you want to address all the hours of all the town, uh, employees, we can, uh, we can discuss that, uh, the next meeting. I don't think, uh, we're prepared for that, for this meeting.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I am prepared. You did say yes to me on the phone when I read you that agenda item. I did send it to the administrative coordinator in plenty of time to be on the agenda. We have discussed opening the Town Hall on old business before, so I respectfully request that we discuss it tonight.
I'm not sure that we're ready for that.
Can the voter, can the board vote on it under old business, whether or not they're ready to discuss it?
Uh, we can do that under items not reasonably anticipated. If, uh, I, I don't even think we have the information from, uh, the department heads, but we can take it up at that time.
It would be old business, not, it wasn't anticipated because I called you, I read it to you on the phone, you said yes. Then I typed it up and sent it to the administrative coordinator.
And you are correct. I did say yes, but it was my interpretation that it was for the Monday night hours. You, uh, you didn't really specify that it was, uh, the weekly hours, uh, so there was a, uh, miscommunication there. Uh, I assumed it was for the Monday night hours, and then when we looked, I looked, it was, uh, that had been tabled at the last meeting, the month, to open up the Town Hall on Monday. I look at that as, Monday night is part of the town hours. Uh, it's part of the employees' hours. So I, I think it would be prudent to, uh, take it up at, at that time. Uh, but we can do it under items not reasonably anticipated.
I respectfully request it be under old business, and again, I typed it up, sent it to the administrative coordinator. I'm assuming you meet and approve the agenda. You would have seen that it was listed specifically, as I'm stating right now, that it was the reopening of the Town Hall and setting the hours of the personnel.
Kathy, what, what don't you understand about the fact that I told you that I received the information? You called me on the phone. I assumed that we were talking about the Monday night hours that we had tabled on the sixteenth. So I didn't realize that that was for all of the other employees', uh, hours that, uh, but we can get that corrected.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor and a second for approval of, uh, the payroll warrant twenty dash zero nine.
So where are the overtime hours coming from? Which, which, are they coming from the administrative coordinator's salary line, at least? I just want to make sure we're not stealing money from other line items to fund these overages. That's all. I just want to keep everything in its right place, so can we get an answer to that question?
I have no, uh, knowledge of where they're coming from.
Will it, will it stay on this?
Probably, probably not. So we can get some clarification on that, where we can, where that's coming from.
No account number listed on the document?
Um, well...
As to where it's charged?
Well, that's, I'm not an accountant. Do you want to look at it? I'm out of my league on this one. So it looks like it's, it doesn't say an account number on this document here. This just says the hours. Oh, wait. It also says a three-hundred per week stipend. That's, that's, that's not, that's wrong, because that ended after thirty days. That motion was very specific. It was just for thirty days. I'm sorry you didn't finish your work, but I was specific in that motion.
Oh, I can make a new motion or extend it.
It's only been twenty-eight days, because it's only been two weeks, I thought. I mean...
No, I think it's been twenty-eight days.
Yeah, it's been twenty-eight days.
Well, we can handle that under, um, I don't see old business on here, but we'll, we'll put that in, um, under items not reasonably anticipated. Uh, thank you for bringing that up.
And so, just to make sure that it will be charged against the appropriate salary account, that's all I want to make sure. Because I want to make sure that while we're trying to hire the new town administrator, we're not draining that account or the treasurer account, because we need the money there to pay these people when we bring them in.
Okay. A motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the payroll warrant?
I, I don't think...
Oh, I'm sorry. You had a comment, Bill? Sorry.
I just have a question. Kathy, uh, when does that, um, the dates end? Did you say the twenty-first?
Uh, end as far as, I'm sorry.
The, 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 the end of that payroll period, is that the twenty-first, did you say?
Um, the twenty-sixth that says here.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, the twenty-sixth.
I thought you said twenty-first. My bad.
Anybody else, um, on the discussion? None? All in favor of approval of the payroll warrant? All in favor? Unanimous? Jason, bill warrant?
Make a motion to approve bill warrant twenty-two oh nine and the amount of one million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, which breaks down to the town of eighty-six thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Water and sewer, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents. Payroll withholding, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Light bills, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Penticat assessment, one million, seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Grants, twelve thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you. Good job. Is there a second?
A second.
In a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous? Approval minutes, the minutes clerk is away, so we don't have any. Appointments, none. Discussion and possible vote. Uh, Town Administrator Search Committee comments and requests. I guess the search committee, uh, search committee has finished their, their work. According to the, uh, correspondence from Joe DeMore, they voted to transmit three candidates to the Board of Selectmen for considerations. The names, along with cover letters and resumes, will be emailed to him on September ninth, after the consultant completes the background checks and references that are supportive of their respective candidacy. Search Committee did not rank the candidates. Nor will any member provide any comment or opinion about any candidate to the Select Board members in any forum. Individual discussion or public meeting. The Town Manager Search Committee strongly recommends that you engage the consultants to facilitate the interviews, which you can interview at a special meeting on September thirteenth. I can't make that word out. It's whited out there partly. Maybe, uh, add an alternate date. Uh, the background checks and references and subsequent delivery of specific names will allow sufficient time for public postings. A process was conducted tonight. Uh, that was, uh, it looks like August, uh, twenty-fifth. Uh, tonight, executive session and the work of the Town Administrator Search Committee has concluded, unless it has to reconvene because candidates have withdrawn and our background checks and our references are not affirmative. Your, uh, your interview of advanced cand, of advanced candidates shall be conducted in an open session. For, and see, special meeting. So you, you sent along, uh, questions that was asked, I guess, of the, uh, potential candidates.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I saw that.
So any comments?
Yeah.
Uh, who's that? Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Special meeting on the thirteenth? I mean, did they schedule that for us? I mean, uh...
Uh, no, we, we have a, uh, we have a regular meeting on, uh, the thirteenth, I believe.
Okay.
So, uh, has anybody got a clearer picture of what that, uh, is between the thirteenth and the date?
I think it's just what you said, alternate date.
What's that?
I think it's just what you said, an alternate date.
Alternate, PR something?
I think it was a typo.
Oh.
Or later date, maybe?
Uh, yeah, I think you could be right, Dan.
Or?
Or. PR, OR?
OR, later date.
Later date. Okay. Um, do we want to schedule something for the thirteenth?
Is that your next regular scheduled Board of Selectman meeting?
Um, yeah, we have a regular meeting.
Do you have the same day or different day?
They should be done in, in open session, um, the, uh, final three candidates. If we get those back, it, all that paperwork back from the, uh, consultant in time, but it looks like they will. Uh, Joe's expecting them back on September ninth.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, I'd suggest if we're going to do, um, those three interviews that night, that we then, except for voting, perhaps bills and warrants, all the other business items, we push to another evening, because I think we should devote our, our full attention to those interviews.
Uh, do you want to put, uh, the, uh, we don't have to do them on that particular night, if there's a, another night that, uh, everybody prefers. I think this is the time to, uh, to decide what night we're going to do, or do we want to make, meet in, uh, separate session? Uh, that probably is a good idea, just to, uh, just to go over those. Is there, is there a date that everybody is available?
I'm pretty flexible. I could do the fourteenth.
What's that, Dan?
Why don't we just do the thirteenth on our meeting and then just have them come in at six-thirty?
Well, it's probably going to take a little bit longer.
And we have the whole evening if we need to go an hour or two hours or whatever it be. I mean, it'd be open-ended on the interviews.
Yeah, there's three of them. I'm not sure it's going to take that long.
I was, I would suggest we allow like forty-five minutes for an interview and then a fifteen minutes in between, so we can, you know, process and, and think, see what we thought. Share thoughts.
Bill, you got something there?
Yeah, I would further suggest that we do it much like, uh, one of those House or Senate investigating committees that I've been watching, where everybody gets a certain amount of time. Uh, you know, you get X amount of time, you prepare for your questions, you ask your questions. When your time is up, it's up. Uh, so these people aren't here for three or four days, uh, being interviewed and exhausted beyond all end, and then they end up refusing the job, because this is just a zoo. Um, it should be controlled, uh, atmosphere, and it should be, um, timed, and everybody should be allotted equal amount of time. And, uh, so it doesn't drag on forever and ever and ever and ever endlessly.
What you, what do you, what do you want to give? Everybody, five minutes?
Well, no, if you're going to have forty-five-minute interviews, divided by five, everybody should get nine minutes.
I have a suggestion. Robert's Rules, um, allows typically, you could reduce it to three to five minutes on the first round, and everybody gets the first round, three to five minutes. And then if somebody wanted to ask a second question, um, you could allow three minutes for a second question. So three to five minutes on the first round, Robert's Rules should go through the whole round. And then, then, only then, you get a second chance after everybody has gone. So you don't get to keep going after that. So it's, it's typically, it's the way you should run any meeting, but especially with a member of five. Go through the board one time, three to five minutes. And then if you have a follow-up, a question, you go around one more time, you have two to three minutes to follow up. That's it.
I'm good. I, I just want it to be controlled and not chaos.
Right, that's Robert's Rules. Actually, watch the school committee kind of do that in their open session.
Uh, Kathy, you want to weigh in?
I have just a question. If you are scheduling the meetings, does a consultant need to be involved as well? Do you have to coordinate schedules with them?
Yeah, well, what did he say in here about, um, how'd he mention something about coordinating with them? Uh, Town Manager strongly recommend you engage in, the consultant to facilitate the interviews. I, I, I don't know whether we need to do that. Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea. I really do. Um, I think it'd be a good idea to utilize the consultant, because the consultant has a lot of experience and is going to ask questions that we might not think of. And it says September thirteenth or later.
Or, or later, okay.
That's what it says. I have a second copy here.
So let us go to the fourteenth. That's later.
And it would also make it a lot more structured, because we could allow the consultant to do the first round of questioning. And then we can absorb it and then come up with any questions that we may have come up with, and we can go around once afterwards.
So you want them, you would like them here the night we, we do the interview?
Yeah, I think it would be good. I think, uh, like I said, I think they, they may come up with things that we might not ask. Um, after all, that's their job. It's what they do. And, uh, that way there would allow us to sit here and absorb it. It would make it organized. And then, once they're done, then we could go around the table with any additional questions that we may have thought of, or what they respond to the questions that the consultant comes up with.
What, uh, then we could talk to the consultant company beforehand and then before the candidates come in. Do you, uh, it sounds to me like it's going to take longer. Uh, I'm not sure that we can do it on the thirteenth along with, uh,
Regular business, yeah.
Along with our regular business.
I agree. I think either we have to move the regular business to another night, or we have to move these interviews to another night. I think trying to put both together, we won't give it our best attention.
Uh, does anybody have any, uh, any conflict the rest of that week, Tuesday through, um,
No.
Probably seventeenth.
Could we space it apart?
Excuse me?
Could we make it so it's not back-to-back?
What do you?
Just like Wednesday or Thursday instead of Tuesday?
Oh.
Yeah.
Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah.
Wednesday, the fifteenth? How's that look?
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting maybe even the following Monday, only because, uh, one of the last sentences in the third, fourth paragraphs, "The background checks and references and subsequent delivery of specific names will allow sufficient time for public posting." So...
So you want to do the twenty?
Well, he's not delivering it till the ninth. That gives this fellow four days. I, I just, I, I don't want to
It's too tight.
jam him.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not available on the twentieth, Monday, the twentieth.
Thursday, the sixteenth?
Well, no, I'll, then, if not the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth. I just want to make sure that we allow this gentleman's sufficient enough time.
Anybody have a conflict on the, uh, Dan prefers the Wednesday over the Tuesday.
Or Thursday.
Well, we'd only prefer that when we had a meeting on Monday, so if we're not meeting on the twentieth, how about the twenty-first? Why are we not using the twentieth? I just, I'm sorry, I just lost track.
Karen's got a conflict.
I, I wasn't available.
Oh, you have a conflict. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I've, okay, so how about the twenty-first?
That's about the only, the only day during the month that I have a conflict.
Okay. Is twenty-first good?
Good for me. Two, Tuesday, the twenty-first, Bill?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, time? You want to, uh, want to meet with the consultants at, uh, five-thirty and then, uh, give us, uh, fifteen minutes with them and then start interviews at quarter of six?
I'd start at six.
Six o'clock?
Just to allow the candidates, you know, the first candidate enough time. I, you don't know where he's coming from. You don't know if he's coming from work. Um, just enough, allow enough time so that they can prepare themselves physically and mentally for...
All right, so we want to post a meeting for six o'clock and then we'll start interviewing about six fifteen. It would be, we can meet with, uh, for fifteen minutes with the consultants.
Well, I just want to make sure, because it seems like we're, we're allowing fifteen minutes to decide the ground rules. And we've had three different ideas on how the ground rules would work, from what Bill said, what I said, what Jason said. We haven't, we, maybe we should decide now how we would like to conduct the interview. Do you know what I'm saying? Because I, otherwise I'm afraid that we're going to be sitting there fifteen minutes going, you know. So if you want to allow the consultant a certain amount of time to ask some questions while we observe, that was your proposal, Jason?
Yes.
So how much time were you anticipating the consultant would use out of the forty-five-minute interview?
I'd say twenty-five to thirty minutes.
For an interview?
Yeah. That would be equivalent to our first round. And I think it would probably be more efficient, because it would go much more smoothly than going from person to person.
So if we, if we do it that way, then the next fifteen minutes would be two to three minutes for each member of the Board of Selectmen to ask a quick follow-up or a clarification.
That would be our equivalent to what you were suggesting, another second round.
Yeah. No, I'm agreed on that. I'm agreed on that.
If we start at six o'clock and what we're doing...
I just want us to agree now.
Twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes, um, that, there are only three candidates. That's an hour and a half. And then a few minutes, fifteen minutes with the consultant, that we'd talk to them beforehand.
What it, what we're saying, Mr. Chairman, is the consultant would start the interview process and we'd allow him or her, it's a him, right, twenty-five to thirty minutes while we observe to ask certain questions. And then there'd be fifteen minutes open, and each member of the board would have two to three minutes, no more, to ask a follow-up or a clarification question. And then the interview would end.
I'm not sure that we can really decide until we, uh, sit down and speak with the consultants and see what they have to say.
Well, it's, of course we can decide. We're the Board of Selectmen. We could decide how we want to do the interview. I mean, the consultant would ask thirty minutes of questions, probably the same questions of each candidate. So we'd be able to sit back and take notes and all that. And then you could ask your own question in two to three minutes.
Well, you're talking, you're, you're not talking that, that much of time.
It'll be about an hour per candidate.
Dan, go ahead.
I don't think two minutes is enough. I don't want to go all day and all night and... But, you know, five minutes, maybe, maybe two, maybe a couple of minutes and then follow up a couple of minutes on a rotating basis. But, um, you know, it's like candidates night, you know, you got two minutes, stopwatch, you know, it's, it's a rush job. It really is. And I don't think this is a game of speed chess. It's a, you know, it ought to be long, long game, but not all day and all night. And, uh, respect for Selectman O'Neill and everyone else, uh...
I think the important thing is to get it right.
I mean, I can talk for days, but, you know.
We know.
I just need coffee. I'll go decaf that day, all right?
I guess, I'm not trying to box you in.
If we do a half, if we do twenty-five minutes or thirty with what Jason said, and then we get five minutes each, maybe. Two and a half minutes and then tail end, you know, I might think of something else, not all at once, you know, but it's just, five, times five, twenty-five, and twenty-five is fifty minutes. So we get ten minutes to play with. So we get ten minutes to play with. So I just, two minutes isn't enough. Ten minutes, I don't need ten minutes of questioning, but to have a dialogue with someone takes more than two minutes, you know? Just what we're talking about here took longer than two minutes.
Okay, but what, the point is that we're observing the answers and responses for twenty-five to thirty minutes so that your question, two to three minutes is a very common amount of time under Robert's Rules to ask a question and hear a response. To have a dialogue in the middle of an interview is kind of inappropriate.
Why is it inappropriate? You chose the words, Kathy, you know? It's just, it's a matter of style, okay? I don't want soundbites from somebody. I want to know how they interact and, you know, they're going to have to interact with me and you and, and, and Bill. And so, you know, not that it's all about me or you or Bill or the chairman, but how's this person going to work with us? So, you know, I want to engage the person a little bit. So it's not just going to be read off a snippet off a time card, you know, an index card and just have a, you know, choreographed answer. That's not what I'm looking for. This isn't a debate, you know?
Agreed, but you ask a question, right? So a question takes about fifteen seconds, ask the question, and then you still have another two minutes to follow up. I mean.
I think if we're allotted five minutes or nine minutes or X amount of minutes, we could, we could, you know, proceed with our own style.
Five minutes, I think, is the max with five of us. That's a lot of time.
But I don't like being censored or structured and, I'm structured in my own way.
You have your own structure.
I do. I have my own style.
You do.
I do. And you do too. I'm okay with that.
I think two minutes is a little low. And I almost think five minutes is a little low too. I think we need to go.
Six, six is a half hour. That's not a lot of time for a hundred and something thousand dollar a year job plus Bennys. For, for, what we all agree is we want to get it right. I mean, we're not one of the lead balloons or any false starts here. So you know what, I hear on the side of caution, you know, we could have one meeting and if we're not confident, then we could talk and say, we need more time. And we want to bring somebody back for a second, a third.
Well, you could, I would agree to that.
And that, that I think will be necessary, you know? Maybe we narrow it down to two and then it's, you know.
I just think we do have to kind of follow a schedule if you have all three of them on the same night.
What, what might be unlikely, maybe there's a, you know, a head and shoulders above the rest candidate and all of us, you know, if we had to submit a, you know, a private ballot, we grade them all and we, all five of us pick the same person.
As possible.
It is.
I know.
Improbable, though.
I don't know.
Well, you know, we've done pretty well as far as the last couple of people that we've hired.
Yeah.
When we hired Rebecca, she came in, it was very orderly. When we hired the highway superintendent, that was, that went pretty well. We hired the fire chief and I think we had, we had a home run on all three of them. And so I don't, I don't think we can, I don't think we can go wrong. And we weren't limited to a timeframe. We asked, we asked questions and got a feel for, for everybody.
But, Mr. Chairman, what I'm, what I'm reflecting on is that we will have three people queued up and I don't think it's respectful for us to run, you know, a half an hour over on the first. So I'm just trying to put some boundaries so that we don't have people sitting out there in the hallway until ten or eleven at night. That's, that's not professional. That's, and I feel like if we're going to rely on the consultant to ask some really critical questions, then our questions shouldn't be the same. You should have something different. So perhaps if your question's already been asked by the consultant, you won't have a question, as possible. But I'm just saying, we have to put some boundaries on it so that we can see all three candidates in a reasonable pattern so that it's professional, you know, as most companies do when they schedule interviews. They usually schedule, you know, like forty-five minutes and a fifteen-minute break and then the next candidate, something like that.
Well, since I've been here and we've brought several people in to interview for different positions, and there isn't one that's come close to an hour that we had them here.
We only had one.
We asked pertinent questions and it, you know, this is an important job.
Yes.
And we want to make sure we get it right. So limiting, limiting the questions that we can ask is, I just have a problem with that.
I have a problem with it not being fair. I think each member of the board should be allocated somewhat equitable amount of time. Not one person should monopolize the night. And I'll point out for the record that when we interviewed the fire chief, he was the only candidate. So we didn't have three people that we had to meet with. And then, so I think just, just, I'm not trying to set a hard, fast rule that will turn your microphone off, but that we agree on some, some general Robert's Rule kind of thing so that we stay in the bounds of what we can accomplish on that night.
Okay.
That's all.
Dan?
If we can agree upon fifty minutes, we could do twenty-five minutes for the consultant along the lines of what Jason suggested and then five minutes apiece for each selectman and we can have a ten-minute break in between. And I'm assuming the candidate's sitting out there and is not watching because they shouldn't know what the other person answered and kind of have.
Well, it is a public meeting.
Put him in a soundproof booth.
Well, you know, hey, you know, I'd want to go last if that was the case, you know? I mean, I don't know. It's, does it fit of the person that goes second or third if, you know, I mean, first, you know, is what it is, but can they sit out in the hallway?
Bill, you want to weigh in?
I'm just thinking that this is the first round, I guess, is what we're saying. If you come well-prepared, it shouldn't take you longer than two or three minutes to ask your questions, especially, and here's the big difference between all the examples you've given so far, Mr. Chairman, and this example here, is this example, we're bringing in the consultant to ask the first round of questions in the first thirty minutes. Now, if you come well-prepared with your questions and you give the consultant the opportunity to take the first thirty minutes to ask the questions, I'm going to, I'm willing to bet that fifty percent of the questions you have on your list will have already been covered and answered in those first thirty minutes. After that, it should be the very few questions you have left on your list are follow-up questions to questions the consultant asked. So again, I hate to turn this into a circus or have it be chaotic. It should be very structured, first round. In the second round, I would assume that we'll be doing it without the consultant, which will give all of us the opportunity to have further time to cross-examine the potential candidate. And that's the time, I think, where we would delve more into the chemistry fit, the rapport that we could establish with the particular candidate as opposed to candidate A over candidate B. I think this first round should be, especially with the consultant here, we're probably paying him. I don't think he's going to do it for free. Should be very structured, very quick, very efficient. And thank you for your time, next candidate. Thank you for your time, next candidate. Then we bring it down to maybe two. Now you can spend an hour with each candidate, unencumbered by the consultant, and you can have much more time. But I think this first round should be really very quick, very down-to-earth, qualifications, experience, and that sort. I'm not looking to, you know, know how many kids the guy, woman has or the grandchildren, the name of their pet dog. It's irrelevant to me at this point. It'll become more relevant at the next stage.
Well, perhaps we could ask Catherine if she could contact the consulting company and let them know that we would like them to ask first round of questioning. And I'm sure they've certainly, they've done this before according to their resumes and they can, they should be able to formulate questions for fifteen or twenty minutes, if that's what we're going to allow them. And.
I think the first point of order should make sure that their schedule coincides with what we, the date we just picked, the twenty-first, so that we're all on the same page.
Right. And, Mr. Chairman, we have one of the search members here calling you out, Janet. Do you mind just sharing with us, how long did the consultant ask questions during the screening of?
He asked them for at least half an hour.
Okay.
And then, and some of them ran longer. And, but in that hour, half hour, hour, he asked us.
Could you, could you go to the microphone, please? Identify yourself for people in, watching.
For the mass of, for all the people that watch our TV show.
It was probably forty, forty-five minutes.
Identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Janet Nolan.
For the, just indicate that you were on the search committee.
Okay, member of the search committee for the town administrator. So we, he spoke, Bernie did a good job asking questions and we were really pleased with the way things went. He did stop at points and ask if any of us had any questions based on items that he was talking about. So we did spend, with Bernie and anything that we were talking about, we did, it was, it was a good hour that they were being interviewed. And someone mentioned about being the second or third candidate waiting outside. They were scheduled at a particular time. They came in one door and went out another door. So they never saw each other, which was good.
There you go.
Secret doors.
I'm in the green room.
It's an open meeting, but they can agree not.
Well, I mean, at this point, I feel like they've probably been asked every question that they're going to get asked again anyway, you know, by the consultant.
Oh, I doubt it.
Not my questions.
Well, no, not your.
They'll be pointed.
Yours are very.
Pencil chopping.
We'll make sure no one hears those.
All right, total time, what do you want to allow each candidate, total time?
I think it came to fifty minutes with Jason's proposal and Dan's proposal put together.
On, on how much time?
Fifty minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
Fifty.
Fifty minutes.
Five oh, five zero.
Fifty minutes for each candidate.
Consultant given thirty and the board given twenty.
Twenty-five and twenty.
Twenty-five and twenty-five. Keep the math easy for me.
Yeah.
Five each and twenty-five for the consultant.
We took five away from the consultant.
Yeah, we took five away from it.
Catherine, press is another question you could ask him is how much time do you think they would need to ask the first round of questions?
Depends on the day, Bill.
Well, you could say limit them to thirty.
Over a time.
All right. I don't know if we need a vote on that. Thank you for weighing in. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you, Janet.
So we're looking at Tuesday, September twenty-first at six o'clock still?
Well, tentatively, if.
Tentatively.
If Mr. Lynch can't make that date, obviously we'll have to reschedule.
Well, we'd like, would we like to pick up backup dates so we don't have to wait till we have another meeting to all.
The very next day.
It's tentative.
Well, pick another tentative date.
Because we don't know what they're doing.
The very next day.
Have it, well, no, I mean, if we're going to hold those two dates open, the twenty-second, we can hold that open?
Six o'clock, still okay then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the twenty-second, is that okay with everybody?
Same time.
Yeah. Like baseball after a rainout, next available day.
Same bad channel.
To be determined. Okay. Wow. I don't know if that's anything we need to take a vote on. We had a discussion on it, everybody agreed.
We have consensus.
COVID vaccination tracking.
Yes. Did everybody get a chance to look at the sheet that I sent out?
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Did you get a chance to look at that vaccination?
Oh, man.
For the Pennsyltowns? I'm just opening mine up. So what I was looking at is they've changed the data that they're tracking at the state level. They don't really track by town, the number of COVID cases as much as by county, but what they are tracking by town and by age bracket are the vaccination levels. And I know that recent discussions, both at school committee meetings about the masking of students and also at the Department of Education, have also focused on vaccination rates as a possible determinant of when a school could be allowed to unmask. Right now, all schools have been told to mask up. So I was looking at our vaccination rate for the week ending seven-twenty, which is July twentieth, was sixty-one percent. And then for about a month later, the week ending August nineteenth, we're up to sixty-three percent. Town in Merrimack in our district for the same period was sixty-four percent and is now, August nineteenth, up to sixty-six percent. West Newbury for the same period, seventy-four percent, and then up to seventy-six percent. And so the, the percent that the Department of Education looked at, that they might, they might consider, they haven't made a decision yet, is that if a school district could show eighty percent vaccination, they might allow them the choice of masking or not masking. Right now, there's no choice. It's been decided for now.
Where did we get these from?
From the state website, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health dashboard.
Well, how do we explain, we'll take West Newbury for instance.
Yes.
Population seventy-five and over, two-hundred-and-forty-one, but yet, two-hundred-and-sixty-six have at, had, at least had one dose. How do you have more people than with the population? And the same thing with sixty-five to seventy-four.
Right.
You've got a population of five-hundred-and-forty-four, but yes, six-hundred-and-forty have, have had at least one dose.
Right, I know, they're population numbers. I wrote that in my note. The total population numbers don't always match the categories. I'm not quite sure why, but the vaccination rates, I think, are what is being tracked. So, I mean, I would continue to watch this data, but I would definitely consider possibly putting this on a town sign so that residents know that we're, we are going up. We went from sixty-one percent to sixty-three percent and it would be good to continue that, that upward climb. Obviously, we're not, none of the children under twelve are included, so that takes away from some of the population. But certainly, to increase our vaccination rate would be in our best interests as a community, especially if we want to have a choice on masking or unmasking our children in the schools. I listened to a very emotional, heated discussion at the Pennsyltowns School Committee meeting in which parents from both sides had very good reasons to either mask or unmask their children. And right now, it's a state mandate. We don't have a choice. But if at some point there is going to be a choice, I think they're going to be looking at the vaccination rates. So I think it would be a very good positive thing to, to publicize our vaccination rate at sixty-three percent and to put a note on the board that encourages people to continue to get vaccinated. It is helping. Every bit helps.
Okay, I don't see any problem with, with doing that.
Yeah, just our percent, the sixty-three percent and then something that, let's keep it going. If you want to put a thermometer at eighty percent goal, fine, you know, something like that. Just to keep people aware of it and I'll keep looking at the data. I know that the totals are kind of weird and I keep looking at them too, but I'm not going to try and recreate their data. I'm just taking what they posted.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody got any comments on that? Bill?
Yes.
Yep.
As I'm looking, it seems like that's the only one that's really weird.
I.
I don't know why.
I agree, yeah.
All the others look pretty, pretty straightforward, but.
Yeah. I'll double-check it.
It's, it's nice to, it's always nice to say things, I guess I'm always a person of action, you know what I mean? So as opposed to, you know, putting it up on the board and saying it'd be nice to get vaccinated, can we coordinate a vaccination clinic here at Town Hall in conjunction with the Board of Health and maybe the council? Well, it's probably not the Council on Aging, it's more the younger side, looks like, well, even still, I guess we could. Because as I look at it, you still have some people sixty-five or older that, according to your data, Kathy, are not still vaccinated. So maybe we could contact the state or somebody and, and see if we can set up a clinic here on a weekend or a weekday or something to help facilitate what we're saying. You know, actions followed by words are always more impactful. We now have a great relationship, I think, with A.W. Chesterton. I'll reach out to Rebecca, to reach out to them and see if they'll hold another one like they did in, in June, to again, continue to foster the, you know.
There, there is a sign on the front door, I don't have it in front of me, that I saw the Council on Aging just put up about a vaccination clinic that's coming up. I'm hoping that's on the town sign out front as well, but maybe not. So she just was pasting it on the door last week. I think it might, no, Denise, our new Council on Aging Director?
Oh, okay, I'll get that.
It's right, yeah, it's on the front door.
All right.
So maybe just posting, there are sites, I think, in Havreland are coming around that are pretty easy to get to. Plus, you can go to CVS now, right, and Walgreens, you don't have to wait for a clinic, you can just walk in. You don't even need an appointment.
I, listen, I agree, I agree with everything you said, but we still have a lot of people that haven't done it for some reason or another, so if we can help that along by bringing it to them.
I just thought publicizing the, the percentage and putting a goal of maybe eighty, you know, this would be desirable, might encourage people that they realize that this will impact the community, because it is impacting our schools.
I'm a hundred percent with you. I just said, I'm just suggesting that we go the extra step and, and have the needle here, to offer them.
I don't know how we would staff that, that's all, I mean.
Well, we, we wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
We'd ask the state to help us open up a clinic on the weekend, much like they did with the consortium that we had in Amesbury. You know what I mean, maybe one or two weekends.
Working with our Board of Health nurse as far as to get something.
That'd be a great idea, go ahead. I'd suggest I make a motion that the chair explore that, those options with the Board of Health to facilitate a, an in-house clinic.
All right, we'll take care of that.
Okay, so it will go on the town sign with the goal of eighty percent is the consensus. It's all right with everybody to start publicizing our vaccination percentage? It's what the state says it is, okay.
I want to get my kid out of a mask at school. He's been vaccinated, you know, he shouldn't be punished anymore for the unvaccinated.
Okay.
That's what, that's what it's coming down to. We're being punished because people aren't getting vaccinated. I want to go back to normal life, help us out, please.
Okay, next, 46 Washington Street Maintenance and Johnson's Pond Water Level and the missing door. I think that was on, at the new mill pond. Mike, I know you've got some information on that.
On the missing door?
Yeah.
Actually, I couldn't figure out what this meant. Mike Dempsey for Community Preservation. So that really meant Johnson's Creek Water Level and the missing stops on the dam that, you know, the one I'm referring to, Kathy.
Yes.
So I think that's what we meant by this item. So first of all, the, the stops missing, I did talk to Rennie about it and he checked with, I think, Bill Green, and they think that those were removed at least ten years ago, which doesn't really make sense with what we saw there. If you recall, we saw the water level was up.
It was.
Yeah. So.
And Jason, didn't you look at that?
Yeah, well, yeah, you showed me the door.
You guys, you went, Chad and crawl down it, you guys looked at it.
Yeah.
What is it, just a twelve, two by twelve?
Yeah, they just, you know, square timbers that fit into the.
Is it there?
No, there's nothing there now. So I don't know exactly what happened, but, you know, the point is that they can't, you know, we can't put them in there if we were gonna raise the level of that portion of the old mill pond there, new mill pond.
Okay.
That can be done, but.
Do we want to do that now, or do you want to just leave it the way it is?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend doing it right now, because that is actually, that's still the church property. It's not town property. So I don't know about flooding it and what they might think about it, so.
Agreed. The other, the other reason this was on, Mr. Chairman, was you said that we'd need a vote of the board to agree to purchase the remote thermometer thing and have the facilities manager check the building once a week. You said that would require a vote of the board.
Go ahead, Mike.
There, there's two items that are needed right away for the building. That is the temperature monitor.
Right.
And putting the lally column up to support that weak spot.
In the bottom, yeah.
And so, you know, we have an approved community preservation project that I think could pay for the, both of those items, because both combined would probably be less than five hundred dollars. So we do have some contingency money in the project.
Okay.
So I can do that.
Who would do that, though? Who would, who's gonna put the, the support beam up?
Yeah, I'll talk to Rennie about it.
Okay.
Dan, you got a question?
What about, what about insurance for vacant property? Is there coverage under our existing policy? Because typically, insurance companies don't like vacant buildings. And I've had some experience with that. And I had to purchase a separate vacant.
I think Catherine's got some information on that.
So, and how much does that cost? And if we're gonna run down this road, who's gonna pay for it?
I don't have the cost on that, I can look it up, but it is currently covered as under, we have an abandoned building policy for the town and it is one of the buildings that is listed.
Okay.
So currently, we're covered and it is funded.
And it's abandoned.
And it's abandoned, except for canoe.
And we have other buildings.
Thank you. Go ahead, follow up?
Yeah, I mean, it's on there, I mean, is this building worth, worth carrying? Is it, has it been determined to be historic? Is it, or is it gonna be a money pit and it isn't worth it? I mean, what is it, you know? And again, I didn't go look at it, apologize, busy that day, but it's just, is it worth saving is the question. I mean, other than sentimental value.
It is a historic building, we, we know that. Whether it's used full to the town for something, I think, will require feasibility study. So what we're planning on doing is getting the funds to do a feasibility study. Either we do it or through the state's program that they have for that, just to see. Because you're right, there's no sense sinking tons of money into the place if we really don't even know what we would use the building for, so.
Yeah, I just don't know if it could be salvaged for, you know, X or Y and, are you gonna throw a million dollars at it or?
Right.
X and, you know, five hundred dollars for a couple of little ancillary charges? I'm not too worried about, it's, it's big numbers.
Yeah.
With commas in them.
I, I think it would take, you know, a significant amount of money to restore the building.
Yeah.
If, if for a purpose, you know, we talked about, when we were there, talked about potentially using it for storage or potentially using it for recreation or potentially using it for.
Senior center.
Seniors, yes. So right now, those are all potentially, but, you know, does it make sense to spend, you know, fifty thousand dollars, say, to restore the building to those purposes? Maybe for storage, maybe not, I don't know.
Do you know if CPA funds could be used?
Yeah, if for recreation, they certainly could be.
So for like Council on Aging or even, you know, youth recreation?
Yeah.
Anything along those lines?
Yeah.
You could rehab the whole building?
Right, because we already own the building and it'd be a matter of restoring this historic building for this purpose.
You know, it wouldn't be considered just general maintenance, it's a rehab.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else, question for Mike, comments? Bill?
I think it's sure.
Jason? Kathy?
Mr. Chairman, you said that we need a vote of the board for the facilities manager to go by once a week to check the building once the heat is operationable.
We'll need somebody to go by periodically, I think it was like, once a week during, was it once a week? Jason, go ahead.
I think we volunteered the highway departments if they're out and about.
And then the chairman said that the facilities manager goes up to clean cell station once a week.
Well, I don't know what he, what he, I don't know how often he cleans it.
I think the big concern was when it was snowed in.
What, what's it, what's it take to just walk in the place and see if the heat's on?
Only, only if it snowed in during the winter. It would take a lot more.
Effort to get through.
We've got, highway department's got plows, we've got the water department that has plows.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I think we, when we were there and discussed it, I think that's why we volunteered the highway department.
Have, have we told? Have we told the highway department yet?
I, I told the facilities manager that we had volunteered. But I don't think we told the highway department.
Bill, go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
I think Rebecca said she would.
I guess, maybe, I, I don't know, maybe it's a dumb question, but in this age where I can see every room in my house with my phone and they can tell me what my, how much water I use just by driving by my house and I can open the garage door and lock my, my, my car with my phone, can't we, isn't there some kind of digital capability that we can monitor the temperature from not even having to be in the building? I believe that type of technology exists, maybe another fifty bucks, and we don't have to have anybody riding by, we just log on the computer and it says forty-eight degrees, we're good.
Cable though, don't you?
Huh?
Don't you need cable?
No, we were gonna, the remote thermostat is part of it, so where are we gonna put the, who's gonna look at it?
How remote is it? You drive by and it's a radio frequency? What is it? It's not cable, it's not cable?
So it's like a phone.
There's electric in there?
Right.
There's power there.
So the idea is the highway department would check it, right? Is that it, they check it on their phone or whatever they use to?
Don't you need an internet connection for that? Mike, this is right up your alley.
Internet.
Uh, can you, do we need an internet connection for that?
Well, Mike, it, it depends if, if, I haven't tested it, but if it's within Xfinity's range, we can take advantage of that without having to have our own pay for internet.
What do you mean, within range?
The wireless.
Oh, okay.
It's got the closest wifi.
And who's gonna monitor it?
Washington Hall is just down the, is, did they have wifi there?
No, no, they're looking to, they're looking to get that though.
Wifi only good for like three hundred feet or something?
Yeah, but Xfinity's got it all over the place, so.
Well, I guess we gotta find out, otherwise you gotta run cable in there or.
Yeah, then it's more.
And who's gonna monitor it?
Well, you can send an email, you can have it send an email to whoever you want to say, oh, the thing's not, you know, it's gone below forty-five degrees.
Sends out an alert and then somebody goes over and checks it.
Yeah, so it could go to Rennie or, or it could go to multiple people.
I mean, I think the technology exists and we ought to leverage that technology wherever possible to cut down on the manpower and the waste of time and energy.
You're, you're gonna be looking into the device itself and maybe you can look into that also. And we'll, we'll come up with somebody to monitor it. For that matter, you could send it to the police station and, and they can, dispatch can monitor it.
Just a thought.
That's not a bad idea.
Every now and then.
Mike, can you stay there?
Okay.
Like a blind squirrel.
I think we're all set on that. The next item was the 46 Washington Street Historical Designation. And I know I spoke to the Historical Society Director and, and I spoke to Mike and it is a historic building, part of the town heritage. So we, we should be all set with that also. Now we got, next on the agenda, Bagnell School Challenges. We got, we got an email from, from Jim Day. Is he, is he on? He's not. Giving us an update on, again, some of the problems that he addressed at the last meeting and along with some of the solutions. And the first item is the summer camp storage. Notify the school district that the small gym will not be able to be used by the youth soccer league due to desks and chairs that can no longer be stored in the basement, which is full of, of summer camp supplies. He explained to Matt, that he, Matt explained to him that he needs the basement because of weather, water damage that can be, get into an outdoor shed, containers. If the town is willing to purchase a storage container at the Bagnell for our, for our furniture, we can keep the summer supplies in the basement and open the gym space for town groups. And he lists the costs here per month. And I'm wondering, looking at this, if there's something that we could do through the Whittier-Botech to have them construct some sort of a storage building on the premises and get it done that way, rather than, it looks like you're talking about renting a, a hundred and twenty-five dollar a month, renting a storage building.
Mr. Chairman, I think our Director of Planning and our Building Inspector are working on this whole issue. I've been seeing emails flying back and forth about this.
Okay.
And I feel like they're, they're coming up with something. I'm not sure what it will be, but possibly they found a way to buy a storage? It might be cheaper to buy a trailer, a used trailer? Just wanna wait to see what they come up with?
Yeah, and also the next one, the water bubble is, he's given detail, Jim Day has given detailed plans for the issue and shared it with Rebecca. He can share it with Rebecca if you wish. Huge project, lead pipes are part of the issue, that, that is a huge, tremendous. So we'll, we'll let him contact Rebecca and work with her on that also.
Mr. Chairman, that was the folder that I gave to Rebecca when she was here at the beginning of the meeting. That was the whole thing on the lead pipes.
Yeah.
So she has all that information now.
That's, that's not gonna be an easy fix.
Right.
Jason, go ahead.
On the, the lead, Mr. Day said that he, when he was speaking with Baldini Plumbing, that they said that most likely it was coming from the SADA, because it was all copper piping. And that the new bubblers with the filtration system would most likely resolve that.
Okay.
So that may be a little bit easier of a fix, depending on what Rebecca and them all sort out. I know that they're working on it and they have the comprehensive plan that, capital plan that was put together and has been working on. I know one of Jim Day's biggest concern was the fact that we didn't do any of the capital plan this year, where every year we try to keep two rooms every year.
Two to three rooms, every year we try to remediate.
And so he's a little concerned that they're gonna start falling behind, which is one of the reasons why he put this together is to, to nudge us and make sure we keep that on, on target, to make sure we keep this school up. Because there are issues with the tiles and the cracking and the asbestos glue that's underneath them and keeping them covered and pox it in. But yeah, I know that it's, it's, it's all being looked at right now and worked on very diligently.
Okay, so we're, we should be all set with all that? Kathy, go ahead.
Yep, so Jason and I met with Mr. Day Thursday morning, right?
Friday morning.
Friday morning, okay. And we did tour the school and I'm, I'm very glad that I did do that, because I haven't been in the building in a few years. I wanted to forward to everyone's attention that the highway department went into the back of the, the backgrounds and they've wood chipped and put some fencing, it's, it's beautiful back there, it's absolutely glorious. The new playground set is, is amazing, the surface under it. I don't think you'll cut your elbow if you fall on that, it was, it's absolutely gorgeous back there now. It looks nothing like when my children were in that school, the, the grass is there, it's wood chipped, it's beautiful. Inside the building, I, I feel like we need to keep our eye on things in there, other than the asbestos tile. He had one room where he put some carpet down so he could use it, but our Bagnell School houses two of the special education programs at Bagnell for the district, their district elementary programs. In addition, the central office IT department has been moved into the Bagnell School because of the building project, so they took over more rooms. And I didn't know whether or not our regional agreement had anything to say about the administration using classroom space in our elementary school, because Bagnell does have the largest population of children. And Mr. Day said he got seven more kindergarteners, had to add another kindergarten class. And he said, people are commenting about moving into Groveland because we're building a brand new middle and high school. And, um, he, it looks to me in our walkthrough, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, that with the other rooms now taken over for the IT and with the two special education district programs housed at Bagnell, I believe the rooms are all fully used right now. I don't know that they have any spare classrooms, especially with the damaged room clearly not, can't use that room until that gets taken care of. So I'm a little concerned on the space allocation in Bagnell, um, being a little tight. And I just did not think that administrative offices were gonna move from the middle school to the elementary school for two years. I was a little surprised by that.
Yeah, you'd think we would have been made aware of it because we own the building.
Yes, that's my point. So I asked for a copy of the regional agreement from Greg LeBrec, cause I just wanted to see, um, what it says in that respect. Because we're, Bagnell's now filling up and we have a damaged classroom from the water where there's asbestos. That room, I assume, won't be used this year. What do you think, Jason?
No.
No, it's spongy and it's bad. I didn't see any other open classroom spaces.
No, in fact, they had two classes that were gonna be using in one.
Right.
Two kindergarten classes, right?
Yes.
Split?
Yep.
One afternoon?
It was the PA and the.
Oh, the OT, yep, the OT and the, and the physical therapy, yeah, they, they had to split one.
PT and OT.
Yeah, they had to split one room for the two. And again, we lost the whole, S, the STEM room is gone. That's now the IT offices. Which is a big space in Bagnell.
Did, do, did he say when they moved that stuff in? Was it over the summer, over last year?
He didn't say, but it's, it's all there.
I mean, did, is it, is it, did they communicated that to us, but we didn't get the email because nobody's monitoring that really diligently?
I don't believe they.
I don't know.
Did that at all. Cause, uh, Jim Day didn't make any mention of it as being something that was forwarded to us. It was just something the school district did, cause they were leasing the building and it's what they do.
But they don't, they don't lease the building from us. We own the building. Oh, right, twenty, I wonder if that's where it's, does it? I just did not think that administrative offices could be moved into the elementary buildings.
Well, I, I, I know the page is a huge building.
Yes, it is.
And I'm thinking that there had to be space, unused space that probably would have been better used as opposed to taking one of our classrooms here in Groveland. And maybe if that's, you know, that's a discussion we have before that move happens, we can look for other alternatives that don't impact our children's classrooms.
That, that's my concern.
Put your paper someplace else.
Well, but again, I, I, we've been.
We give up classrooms.
Right, but we've been without, we've been without a, 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 a point person in that position for quite some time, so I don't wanna just throw it out there that someone else is to blame. It may be our negligence that we missed the email and, you know, and when they didn't hear anything after repeated requests, they said, okay, they must not care, we'll do it anyways. Or we'll do it and then beg for forgiveness later. I don't know how, you know, how it works.
Did you wanna ask, um, Greg LeBrec about that, if, if we were contacted?
I'll see, I'll see, I'll see all of them on Tuesday.
Okay, I would ask him. I mean, I was a little surprised to see that. I did not know that, um, that it happened.
Right, I, I mean, it's the hardship it creates on our students and our, our children in our town because we're already limited in space. We're already lost a classroom due to, uh, some water damage. We, we need the space more than the other towns do. Maybe this wasn't the best place to put it?
So you're gonna get the answers on that?
Well, I'm gonna try to get answers, but you know, they are.
So my understanding is it wasn't budgeted for these improvements at the Bagnell, so we're gonna skip a year? I mean, is that acceptable or unacceptable? If not, I think we need a special town meeting to appropriate funds. I mean, otherwise we're gonna skip this school year and wait till next on the bus, or?
Well, I, I.
What is, what is?
We could appropriate if we go to town meeting for the Penntucket budget. We could appropriate money, but they wouldn't be able to do the work until June. But this year, the kids, the students, the kids, the children are getting out early, right, Jason, remember? So we would be able to do the work before the summer program kicked in, I think.
Generally, to do it during the summer, while the summer program's there, we usually do two to three rooms at a cost of about $25,000 per room every year.
Do we do it while the summer program is there?
Yeah. Because there's always a couple of rooms they won't use.
So that didn't happen this summer, so it's water, it's water.
Okay, so you wanna.
Under the bridge here.
Right, unless you wanted to try and squeeze it in in June.
Asking, what, what is, what does Jim Day want us to do now? Just be aware of these issues so that we budget it coming, coming up towards the end of the year and think about it?
I think so we don't fall too far behind.
But he, he's not expecting results now. It's just, it's too late. Cause they're not gonna do the construction while the kids are in session.
Well, they could do it in June and then you could have a town meeting appropriate another 50,000 for the next year and we'd be on track again. We have the money in stabilization.
But how do we get it to them?
We just do a town meet, at the town meeting, just.
In next May? So it can wait?
No, I think we have to have a town meeting this fall for our Penntucket assessment.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that may help move around some other smaller numbers that we've had discussions on where we're getting the money from.
No, I don't wanna open the floodgate. That would be the only other thing.
Floodgate, couple grand.
No, 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 no.
Maybe.
Holding the line here.
We're having special town meeting, we gotta clean up oversights, undersights and just.
Oh, sure.
Respect them circumstances.
Nah, I think, yeah, the operating budget is stretched. Then we don't have available money to move around. We're moving money out of stabilization even for the Penntucket budget.
So we need some hard numbers, I think, from.
Well, he's working on a couple of solutions here from, uh, with, with Rebecca.
Okay.
And, uh, under, uh, item three, the flooring, uh, he's had a couple of more solutions. He's been in discussion with Catherine, uh, that the flooded room may be covered by the town insurance. They're working on that. And, uh, I only have one page. Is there, is there another?
But Mr. Chair, do we need a timeline or, uh, a real deadline or an artificial deadline on, we need some numbers? Cause it, you know, if we have special town meeting.
I think that we need to, uh, I think we need to, uh, uh, let, uh, let the principal, uh, follow up with Rebecca.
Get back to us in a month or?
I think, oh, no, I was thinking of, I was thinking of within two weeks we, we should be able to, at our next meeting. We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and see if we had any solutions.
Okay.
Right, so for the town insurance, they, they're, the insurance company is gonna send someone over, I would assume, just gonna look at the room and make an estimate of how much money, right? I would like to have our building inspector, um, as a participant in that, cause he's looking out for us and our school building, um, and Mr. Day as well, because those are the experts. They're the ones that can really say what needs to be done to that room to make sure it can be used as a classroom again. It was really wet.
I think Catherine has some follow up on that.
The adjuster met with, um, Mr. Day and myself last week and was doing up a report to send to Maya, but I haven't seen anything come back yet, so.
Well, I would like to have the building inspector meeting with the adjuster, cause they're gonna be talking the same language.
About forwarding that information to him?
I did invite Sam to come, the building inspector, to come to, um, the adjuster's meeting and he said he'd rather see the report and then work from that point afterwards.
Okay, good. So then he will be taking charge of that. That's good.
Okay, thank you. I think we're all set on that. They're working on that.
Yes.
Next is, uh, articles, uh, Article to the State Health for Finance Directory repeal discussion. Bill, I think you were working on that.
Yeah, and I've gotta admit, I've, I've struck out. I've reached out to a, a few people, but nobody has responded to me yet. So I'm a little bit frustrated on where this thing is right now.
Okay.
So a motion we table that until the next meeting.
Okay, motion to table. Uh, is there a second motion to table?
Before we, one question quick. Um, the town attorney, do, were you here for that meeting when that women attorney from KP Law read that thing? The long, he remembers.
I was not.
Okay. Get a copy of that. Um, Catherine should have it. We all saw it. I thought that was the thing.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to, uh, to Bill Uton, see if he can give me a copy and.
Yes, he was on that Zoom.
Where, where we stand on that.
Yes.
Okay, motion, uh, a motion on the floor to table. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, um, all in favor? Table? Uh, unanimous, five zero. Waste management contract discussion. I think Kathy, you were working on this?
Yes, and I think, um, I now feel like I have a full and complete understanding of, of this whole, um, overflow bag program, the reduction in barrel program. Um, and I'm pretty excited about it. I, I gave you, I think it's sideways in your packet unless you have a printout of it. I looked at the, the percentage that we are, um, recycling currently and we're kinda below, um, other communities as far as percentage recycling. I think we're like 22%. And then I looked at our monthly bill and when you look at the monthly bill, what you'll see is, you know, that we pay, um, anywhere from 84 and it will go on up to $90 a ton for trash. But recycling, even though we do pay for it because of the offsets, it's only like $37 a ton. So the difference between the 84 and the 37 is savings to the town by diverting, um, trash to recycling. So the reduction in barrels is meant to do, divert things one of two ways. The first, the best way would be into the recycling pile, um, for people, get people more conscientious about that and reducing to the two barrels or the 164. Or if they find that they're not gonna do that, then they purchase the overflow bag. And the overflow bag would cost $2.50. The waste zero company only gets 39 cents from each bag, so we get $2.11 per bag. I'm using Roy's from Waste Management, estimated bag sales of one per household, even, there might be more than one bag per household sold. And that would give us an additional revenue of $6,353. So when you combine that with increasing our, um, recycling by either even just 5% increase, would save us, you know, 27, $28,000 plus the 6,000, we're going over $30,000 in just the first year or so. So, um, the neat part, the part that I was really, um, excited about, other than saving money, is that this sale of overflow bags would be done without any, without interrupting anybody's work here at the town hall. So if you could page to the contract, you'll see that in the contract pages, they ask us to select retail outlets. And they, they suggest that we choose three to five. They say actually Market Basket has done it in some communities. And so what they do is they sell the, um, case of the overflow bags to the store and then the store sells them to the public. They don't bill the store for 30 days, so the store has 30 days to sell them. Now, let's say the store hasn't sold all 30. Well, then they just don't pay the bill and they wait till they've sold all 30 and then they pay the bill. The only thing that will happen to the retail outlet when they don't pay the bill after 30 days is they won't get another case of the overflow bags. So the initial order that they are suggesting would carry us through the first two years. They would make the bags with, um, our designation on them. It would say Groveland and all that. And then they will store it in their warehouse in Massachusetts. They will distribute to retailers as needed. The retailers collect the money, the retailers pay the bill to, um, Waste Zero and then monthly Waste Zero gives us a report telling us and wire transfers our money to us. And so it, it would not involve anybody in the town hall having to sell bags or being interrupted from their work cause somebody wants to buy a bag. That being said, she said some town halls like to have a certain supply available, just to be convenient. And they also, she also said sometimes town halls keep another little bit for a hardship case like someone's basement floods or something. And they give them some bags to clear that out with. But, um, it's a great program. I think it's, I think we should go ahead and make the vote. She said the implementation date would have to be January 1st at this point, to allow enough lead time for the order to be put in. And so the Board of Selectmen, if you look at the contract, would select the retailers that we want to market the bags. She would do all that, reach out to them. We can reach out to them as well if we want to, like, give them a, call and tell them, you know, oh, by the way, you're gonna hear from this woman, um, we're gonna have overflow bags for sale. I think, um, she services Merrimack and they do a pay as you throw, so it's all overflow bags. They've taken the trash right out of the budget.
What does the, what does the vendor get? The.
39 cents per bag.
They get 39 cents a bag?
Yes. And they.
So what, and we are selling them for what?
$2.50 is what the Board of Health chose. And she said that's kind of the norm. So, and the ba, the bags would be 33 gallon bags and they'd come in a roll of, um, the Board of Health selected five bags per roll, so you, you would purchase, it would be $12.50.
So there's, uh, just to help me out again, what, what did it cost for the, to manufacture the bags?
Well, she, well, she just gets to keep 39 cents a bag.
39 cents a bag?
Yep, and we're selling them for 2.50.
And then minus, minus what the, uh, uh, the store is getting, going to get?
No, the store doesn't get anything. The stores usually participate because it brings people into the store. They can put a sign in the front window that says that they're selling the overflow bags. And it's just a matter of convenience, so people, if they're driving by a store, like, um, well, I did, you know, the store on South Side of Groveland is the liquor store, but, but so be it. It's convenient. Um, you have Jerry's Variety, you have Nicole's, Minmart.
And soon we'll have, uh, the.
Oh, and Fanny's, um, Grass Station and Minmart too.
Minmart, yeah.
Yep, so that's four. And then if you wanted to offer it to Market Basket where a lot of residents go to shop, um, they typically will do it as well. So they'd have a, a, a variety of locations that they're driving by. That, that's what, um, Courtney encouraged. She said, try to find places that people don't have to go to, to get the bags, that they're going by or going to anyway. And then they can get their, um, overflow bags. So what do you say? Let's do it.
Well, I thought we had already voted to, um, have the, have it sold through the Board of Health.
That's not, no, it doesn't, well, they're participating. They picked the color of the bag and the size, but they weren't, they don't need to. They can certainly have some there, um, if they want, to, to be available to people that do come through the town hall. But, um, the representative from, uh, Zero Waste said it's really best to put it in places that they're gonna go to anyway. Places they're gonna frequent anyway, so that it's just a convenience. They don't have to go out of their way. And that makes a lot of sense. And it gets the community involved. You know, we're involving our retailers.
Uh, any comments?
And we're saving money.
Jason?
No, I think we should.
Bill?
The motion.
I think it's a great idea. I, I think the time is, is long overdue. We're one of the only towns or cities in the Commonwealth, I think, that have unlimited trash collection. You know, we stand out as suckers in, in, in the greater area because everybody knows, hey, Merrimack, I gotta pay for my garbage, but I got a friend over there in Groveland and they got unlimited pickups. So, you know what? I'm not gonna buy any trash bags in Merrimack. I'm just gonna drop them off with my buddies in Groveland. Well, they'll pick up 20 bags if they have to. We're just suckers, not changing it. We're way behind the time with everyone else. It's time we catch up.
Well, you know that was going on when Groveland was one of the few that, uh, had a furniture pickup, an old stuffed chair, at no, at no charge. You know some of that stuff was coming from out of town and I, I, I don't disagree with you. I think that probably some of these, uh, people that put out, uh, four bags, uh, five bags of barrels, I, I do, I agree. I think some of it's coming from out of town.
I'll give you another example. I own a business. I know the escalating cost of trash. You know what? I'm just gonna eliminate that from my budget because I know my town, they'll take everything I put out. So I'm gonna cancel my trash contract at my place of business and I'm gonna bring home two extra trash bags every night after I clean out my offices and all, uh, my employee stuff and, and there we go. And God bless the residents of Groveland subsidizing my. And God bless the residents of Groveland subsidizing my business, you know? This is just another example that we've got to stop being suckers.
Dan, you want to weigh in?
Wow, follow that. I'm a little more old school. I think that if I'm paying, you know, nine, ten grand a year in real estate taxes, you can pick my trash up without nickel and diming me two dollars and fifty cents for a purple bag. I don't take trash from my friends, neighbors, businesses, Merrimack, West Newbury. I mean, I don't import it, I don't export it. I'm just normal people, I think we're normal. I throw my empty bottles in the sink, and they end up in the recycle bin. And we recycle. And I don't know that we put out too much trash, but every now and then you clean the garage of the house, and you want to put out something. So I just, I don't think it's abused that much. I just think it's a basic function. I'm not of a mindset of following everyone else in Massachusetts. I don't want to beat a dead horse and exhume it and beat it some more. But, you know, we live in tax and spend Massachusetts, and they pass on every feed year and raise your taxes, and economy up, taxes up, economy down, taxes up. Just pick my trash up, educate my kids, you know, plow the streets. It's a basic service. I don't think it's extra. I don't know that it's abused. I could be wrong on that. I mean, it sounds like you guys know that furniture is picked up that didn't come from here. But anyways, you know, I think it's too radical, an approach, two and a half dollars for a plastic bag. Maybe there's a softer landing. I don't want to go from four. I don't know that it's unlimited. I thought we had a four-barrel limit. I'm not so sure it was ever enforced. I really don't know, I haven't policed it. But, you know, I'm more of an incremental change guy. They get cutting it in half from four to two is a little too much of a trap door or that. I think somewhere in middle ground would be a compromise solution, three barrels. A buck a bag, maybe, two fifty. You know, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking Buddy Hall, you know, that'll be the day. I pay two fifty to throw out something, I mean, that'll be the day. Funny you mention a business. I mean, if I had to, I guess I'd, you know, just bring it to work with me, I've got the dumb stuff. But it's rare. It's the exception, not the norm. I just, and how much are we going to go up? You know, we're going to save, you know, recycling, I don't know that it pays. I don't know that there's a hard market for that. I think it fluctuates, and I don't know that we can rely on it for money. You know, I was trying to find some information on it. Waste Management doesn't do it, but used to be, you know, they sell the plastic to China. They stopped taking it a few years ago, and a lot of it ended up in the Pacific Ocean floating around out there somewhere. So I'm a little skeptical on recycling and whether or not it pays for itself, whether or not it ends up in the landfill. I think most contracts, I'm going to go look. I don't know if anyone knows this or not, but is there, you know, a provision in there? If there's not a market for the recyclables, they landfill it, you know, or put it in the incinerator. So, you know, ideally you want to recycle everything you can, but I just want it as a basic service. I think it's too radical, a change to just go from four to two, and then here's two fifty, you know? You know, I'm trying to keep track of what we put out every week, and I don't know that we put out more than two barrels anyways, plus recycling. But on the occasional time we do, I want to be able to do it.
Okay. You want to take a vote? Do we want to take a vote on the?
I'm just going to respond.
On the bags?
So I think if you think that the trash, the cost of trash could stay within our budget the way it is now, you really have to have your head in the sand, okay? Just looking at.
I don't have my head in the sand. Watch what you say, Kathy. You got pointed remarks, and I will respond to those.
Let me finish, because I spent a lot of time, I've spent a lot of time researching this, because I too.
Head in the sand, pull your head out of the sand. I got a few issues with that.
Hey, hey.
Be respectful.
Please. So I think that, yeah, you know, you might say, oh, recycling, we don't get money for it, we pay. But we're paying a lot less to dispose of the recycling than we are the tonnage for trash. And it's not that we're followers and that we're just following blindly like stupid sheep, and it's not taking away anybody's rights. It's just using real cost analysis, real world issues here. It is well documented, I'm glad to share, every survey I've looked at, every piece of financial information, including the bills that we get here that show how they look at the commodity, it's like a commodity market, the recycling thing.
Exactly.
And they come up with our single stream charge. And the problem with the trash contract is it's a budget buster. It's going up far more than two and, prop two and a half. The school budget is tough enough. When that goes up three percent or more, we're looking for other budgets to go down. Trash going up at this rate, we're not going to be able to fit it within the budget without cutting town departments. And I'm trying to save that small little piece of pie that we have for town services. And the only way to do that is to protect the budget that we've allocated so that we don't go over on our trash budget. We allocate this much money and two and a half percent increase every year for trash, and the rest of it we have to deal with in another manner. You might say, oh, I'll vote for an override, but you know, general overrides can get diverted in all different paths. So you really have to look at this from a practical, cost-effective way and understand that it's a universal problem. The cost of trash is escalating far too quickly. Everybody's costs are, I've looked at Bellows, I've looked at all of the other contracts, it's the same. It's going up way too fast for a town municipal two and a half percent budget. So, I mean, at least try this. If we don't like it, we can alter it. But, I mean, we have the flexibility built in the contract to vote to go to two barrels. We'll track it, track it on the bills, see what's going on, and then we can revisit it. This isn't like forever.
Mr. Chair, quick rebuttal.
So, no, I'd like to have your support on it. That's all, I just, I feel like I've done a lot of research on it.
Rebuttal?
Yes, I mean, you've heard me last meeting, and I'm not going to belabor, you know, my politics versus yours. But last meeting, we added payroll. Never before have we paid benefits for somebody that works up V C Park, okay? So you have an idea of expanding services, and yet you say we can't afford things. I see this as a reduction of services to the people and the taxpayers of Groveland. It is a reduction of services, okay? Yes, the cost goes up, just like health insurance has accelerated at a faster pace, typically year in and year out, they had prop two and a half. And yet we don't go back to the employees and say you need to pay a larger share of your health insurance costs. We just absorb it in the budget. So you could pick and choose what services you want, and I don't want to add payroll. I've talked about expanding the bureaucracy. When I was on the board, I objected to additional positions. Since I've been gone, those positions have morphed from part-time to full-time jobs, and the tentacles of the octopus continue to expand. So if you look at the increase in salaries, benefits, and pensions in this town, they've exceeded two and a half percent. So you want to cut trash to make room for it, that's your prerogative. I don't. So you're not going to have a unanimous vote out of me, and if I'm on the four to one, I'm on the four to one.
Okay, well, we agree to disagree.
Okay. Anybody else?
None.
Ready for a vote? Put it in the form of a motion. Kathy?
So the vote would be to reduce the barrels to two thirty-two gallon barrels or one sixty-four gallon barrel effective January first. We would need to execute an agreement with the Waste Zero Company for the overflow bags. And we would need to do a public information campaign to get the information out to our residents. And that's my motion.
Okay, the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? None. All in favor? Opposed? Opposed. Four in favor, one opposed. Next.
So Mr. Chairman, prior to executing the contract, do you want this contract to go to K P Law for them to review?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for them to weigh in on the other part of the contract. But not including the bags. But maybe you can ask a question. The, I thought we just signed the contract with them.
We did, with Waste Management.
Waste Management.
But now we have to do a contract with the Zero Waste, the overflow bag company. That's a separate contract.
All right. Next on the agenda is the E S S R School District Funds. We did invite the school committee, and they didn't, they're not here. Anybody on the Zoom, Catherine?
I don't know if they'll vote. And this person is from the committee. I don't know who they are, but I did not receive any emails back telling me that they would be attending.
Okay, yeah, okay. Kathy, I know you were working on this, and you went to the meeting. You want to quickly bring us up to date on?
Well, yes, I went to the meeting, and of course, they voted through the additional assessment. So I feel that we will need to schedule, we should at least tentatively schedule a town meeting the first week of November, maybe, because we want to make sure we can set our tax rate. So the assessment has been voted and delivered, and we would have to move the funds, right? Even if we don't vote on it, we'd have to vote to move the funds from stabilization. Because we certainly, I don't think, have the extra room under a prop two and a half at this juncture. I did come down to the town hall, I did some work with the assessor, Julie, and I did note that the state is using a higher number for our equalized valuation than what our assessor is reporting. So that would be something that I'll definitely put in the letter that we're going to question. Why are they using a number that doesn't agree with our Department of Revenue equalized valuation? The main problem, in my opinion, of what's happening is that they are determining, based on a formula they've created, how much we can afford to pay. So what they do is they set the foundation budget, and then they allocate it to the three towns, and then they're supposed to fill the gap with the Chapter Seventy-eight, right? Well, the Chapter Seventy-eight goes to the district. So Groveland, even if Groveland's share of that Chapter Seventy-eight is bigger because of lower income or anything, we're not seeing that in our assessment. Do you understand what I'm saying? Yes?
Yes, can we appeal?
Yeah, so I'm going to try and draft something, yes. I mean, that one number that Julie showed to me, I know that's a solid number. They're not using that number correctly. And then I'm going to look at what the percentages are for us versus West Newbury. Because West Newbury then got capped and brought down. Their foundation was supposed to be higher, and then for some reason, the state decided, oh, that's too much for them, and they lowered it by some rule of seventy-five percent or something. It's a bizarre formula.
Because of pupils?
No, the allocation of the foundation budget to the three towns has absolutely no basis on students.
Have to do with wealth?
Yes. To equalize valuation, which they're using a number that's different from what our assessor has, local effort from property wealth, and I'm not even sure how they got that number, and then, of course, our total income for two thousand eighteen, and I don't know how I can verify that. But the long and short of it is they decided that we could pay, that we can afford a lot more than we can because of the way they did the calculation. Has nothing to do with students. It's valuation, it's income, it's, and then they have an arbitrary, pay the lesser of eighty-two point five percent of the foundation or seventy-five percent. And that's how West Newbury's got brought down. They were determined to be paying too much, and so they reduced theirs and allocated it to us. So if we challenge it, what will happen, if we're successful, and I hope to be, that we can move the allocation back onto them.
Do you want a vote to, of the board, to have you follow up on an appeal process?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow Selectwoman Kathy Castren Ellis to continue on her work with the school board and to file a appeal to the assessment that we're getting.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next up, Pumpkin Festival Discussion. This is something that was put off last year because of the virus. And I'd ask Catherine to get ahold of some of the people in the committee. She's already working on that part of it, along with the Boy Scouts and a number of different organizations, the Council on Aging, the library. And I think the only expense would be for the staging that we've always used, rented from Taylor Rental. The idea was perhaps to use the bleachers that are down at the baseball field, softball field, but Highway Superintendent says if they lift those up, they'll probably break. Are they in that bad a shape, Jason?
No, just flexible.
Flexible?
They require a lot of care.
So did anybody have any feelings on that, whether it should be, it should be a go-ahead on that or not?
I always thought it was a nice celebration of the fall, you know? It's nice to see the pumpkins go up on that scaffolding. I thought we always got a good participation. Be nice to invite the Duns back for that, maybe, because they started it. It was Bill Dunn's brainchild, right?
And Dan's wife always made some great cookies if we could get that done again. Whatever, they all worked. Bill, you got anything?
Maybe we could have former Selectman Dunn as being one of the judges.
I don't know whether there was any judging.
There'd be judges.
No.
Thought you guys judged and like gave, you know, first place a first grade, first place, second grade, third grade.
Well, I've been at every one of them, and at first I heard of that.
Okay.
All right, so we can continue with that. Go ahead.
The duration of how long it's going to be up, I mean, you know, I'm not the pharmacist almanac or, you know, weatherman, but I mean, it's rained a lot this year, I don't know, so.
You have?
What allows a summer for sunshine?
It's, I think it's approximately a week, I think.
It's just about a week, ten days?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I don't think it goes a ten day, no, I don't believe so. But we'll see if we can shake some memories and. Okay. Well, it's worked out, and everybody seemed to enjoy it. You got some of the, some of the groups involved, and so we'll keep working on it. Next up, we have approval of the Pine Speedway permit. Pine Speedway is planning on their annual Pine Speedway reunion on Saturday, October first. And we have the application for the special permit, and it needs a vote of the board. Somebody make a motion?
Make a motion or hold the Pine Speedway.
Here is the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second, any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Next up is approval of a tab beer truck private event, one-day liquor license at V C Park, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Mike, can you, are you familiar with this, that you can just weigh in on and help us out? We got the permit application here, but we don't have any, anything as far as what it's all about.
Yeah, so this is a, it's a private event. I believe that it's a wedding, and normally, this is from four to seven P M. on September eighteenth. So normally, the people giving the party apply for the permit. In this case, they hired a company that's going to supply a beer truck, and so Vanessa thought that'd be better if they applied for the permit. The insurance is the same, the town is covered under a rider, a one-day rider. So everything is the same. The only difference is that the people providing the truck are applying for the permit as opposed to the party people.
Usually with these permits that come in, usually we have a copy of the insurance rider? rider?
No copy of it?
No, I didn't see any here.
I have it.
Oh, you do? Okay, all right. Thank you. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license at VZ Park on September 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 for tapped beer trucks.
Is there a second on that?
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor of a permit? Opposed? Abstain?
I'm for it, yeah.
All right. 5-0 passes. Thank you, Mike, for coming in and explaining that. Next on the agenda is appointment of an interim procurement agent. Kathy, I think you were working on that.
Yes, I just feel that it's, it's a very weighty position that's not filled and it will be filled once we hire the interim, the, not the interim, the town administrator, but in the, in the interim of not having a procurement agent, I think that the taxpayers have paid for Rebecca's certification process and she's a fully certified procurement agent. We should appoint Rebecca Oldham, the interim procurement agent, and send a letter out to all of our town departments so that if they have any questions about anything related to buying something, they can know whom to direct them to. I think it's just much too, there's too much liability involved for the town not to appoint somebody that's certified in this area. We already saw what happened with the senior van and I just don't want to see any other mishaps with CARES Act or American Relief Fact money or anything else. I mean, better to ask the expert than to try and go it your own way and find out at the end that you can't do it. So Rebecca's willing to do this, she's not asking for any additional money or anything. She's glad to help out. So I'll make a motion to appoint our Director of Planning, Conservation, and Economic Development as the interim procurement agent.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous.
Yes, and I'd like that the, we sent out a notice to all, all the town departments so that they're aware that we have that in-house expertise.
Okay, we'll get that taken care of. Next on the agenda, scarecrow event for the Bagnall PTO for the month of October on the Elm Park lawn. And the Bagnall PTA is planning on running a town scarecrow event for the community this fall. The scarecrow event contest would bring the Bagnall families, would extend from Bagnall families who would like to display their scarecrows at their home and local businesses. Some of you may have seen the area towns run this scarecrow event in the past few years. Before extending the invite to local businesses to participate, we're asking for permission for the local businesses in downtown. If they choose to participate to display their scarecrow on Elm Park, the time to display the scarecrows would be from October 1st to the 31st, or it has to be taken down on the 30th prior to trick or treat, if you think that would be better. I think that would be better. Any comments? And Jason?
I think it's a great idea.
Kathy?
So it's just the businesses that are using the, everybody else is putting their scarecrow in their front yard?
It looks like it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if a local business wants to participate in a community event, that's put their name on the scarecrow, I assume, a little publicity for the businesses in town, that's not a bad thing.
Bill, anything?
No, not at this time.
No, Dan?
How many?
They're going to stab many rounds with a steak, launchers?
Pitchforks.
They're going to blow around in a hurricane, I don't know. I don't know. Just, I just, you know, thinking aloud here, you know? Scarecrows. Yellow Brick Road. Okay.
All right. There's a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the, I don't even know how we vote on this. It's not even on the agenda.
What, the scarecrow?
This, the scarecrow thing.
It is on the agenda.
It's, it's on the one that was printed today. It's not on the one that was issued, you know, back in the day. So, well, so I'm looking for it in my pack and I'm like, why can't I find this? What are you reading that I don't have in my packet? So then I look at the original one, it's not on there, that's why I don't have it in my packet. But now it's on here now.
Okay.
Well, it was submitted on Wednesday.
Are you abstaining, you're voting yes or no?
I, I don't know, but I'll abstain just to make sure that I'm not.
Okay, four in favor, one abstention. Next, all, all business, it is on here.
Is it on open?
No, it isn't. Subcommittee findings for the Administrator Coordinator. That was, Kathy had requested that before and I think we took care of what you and Dan were working on it.
Yeah, the only thing is, is I think we need to extend it for another 30 days because there's clearly things that have to be done, that she needs to be done, doing, that are outside of the scope of her $19 an hour job. Dan and I had discussed it and a lot of it has to do with not necessarily the individual petty little things, it's just the fact that IT needs a point person. There has to be somebody here when IT comes here. And when they, when the, when the servers were attacked, that was a great example. That's not something that we were able to come down and take care of. So, and we also have another meeting coming up where we've taken a lot of the petty little stuff out of the list so we can refine it and make it much more direct.
Okay, Dan, you were on that committee with, with Jason, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, some of the things she's doing, I mean, there's a list here and I had asked that you, I mean, we discussed it, the three of us, you know, what shouldn't be on the list and so there's, you know, lines through these things, red lines, I guess. And, but people, I think, need to bear in mind that a lot of these functions, there's no one else to do them. So, you know, unless we as a board are going to say, don't do them, it's not your job, which you haven't heard yet, then we have to continue down the path until we hire a TA and some of these things are delegated and absorbed by what used to be a finance director and which will, going forward, will be a town administrator. So unless we're going to drop the ball on all of these functions and just, you know, do nothing, then, you know.
Do you want to make a motion to extend the stipend?
We're going to have a special town meeting and it's, you know, we're not, we're talking $300 a week, which, you know, which is money, but in the grand scheme of our budget and if we're going to have a special town meeting, then we're going to have to readjust because I don't know why these weren't anticipated in the last finance budget, but, you know, hindsight's 2020. And now that I have my glasses on, there should have been more money appropriated for this position and all the tasks. And the further we delay that town administrator position, a lot of this, you know, these administrative tasks will continue to exist and without any way to mitigate them, except paying $300 a week on the stipend. But, you know, that bill has to go through the State House as far as I know. So even if we pick a person that are interviews, I don't know that we can hire them without that going through the legislature.
Oh, no, we can hire them.
We can?
Yes. We'll be, we'll have someone in, on house, yes.
So what do we need the bill for?
Well, that's another whole thing.
Heal the finance director.
Oh, so that's just an empty seat? So it like dies on the vine no matter what we do, no harm, no foul? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
So I make a motion to extend it for 30 more days and we will have, you know, another round. Mr. Chair, I'd like that we, we dock it for, you know, a, a beating so that we can go over what, you know, we discuss. And again, let the board decide what they want to take away off this list and then you, all of us have to decide, well, who's going to do it?
When are you going to meet with Jason and the administrative assistant?
I can make some time this week or next, I mean, before the next meeting, before the next meeting.
So you want to have a follow-up, you want to run the agenda for the next meeting?
I would like it, I mean, if Jason agrees and if, you know.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Kathy?
Okay, first of all, the $300, I think is excessive. I think that there needs to be some, some calculation. I, I agree with the idea that we need an IT coordinator when something goes wrong and someone has to come down here and meet the team. But I disagree that we have to have one point person and I've spoken to the head of our IT company, I have a copy of our agreement with them, and they've actually offered to come in and talk to us, I think we should have them in. We can allow our department heads to go directly to them on specific things. Our department heads have 20-plus years' experience, some of these guys, they can handle if they need to call IT, you know. I think what you need to do is think about what type of coordinator thing do you need done right now because we don't have a town administrator? We don't have to follow this, everything goes through one person thing because that's inefficient and it's, it's blocking the progress of our departments. They need to be able to operate efficiently and quickly and so if the police department has an IT issue or needs a password, they should be allowed to call directly and get it. They should have that authority, we should just give that to them, it's, makes perfect sense. I'm not against having something that's based on some kind of a cost analysis because I do recognize that we don't have a town administrator right now to meet the IT person when there's a computer problem. But this is where I differ from what you're thinking of, Dan, in terms of the town meeting. And I, I know you've only been on the board since May, so you may not realize it, but in every single meeting up until that town meeting, we were within a couple thousand dollars of being in the red. The budget was extremely tight, extremely tight. So when I talk about that we could fix a floor at Bagnall, that's because that's a one-time cost, that can come from stabilization. When I talk about the Penn Tucket budget, I don't want it to come from stabilization. But if we're challenging the basis of that assessment, I can rationalize that we're going to get some relief. So we're not going to be facing a bigger deficit next year. If we can get this foundation budget adjusted with a long, hard fight, okay with the stabilization. But right now, if you go to town meeting and start trying to increase salaries all over the place, I fear that we are going to have an unbalanced budget and not be able to set our tax rate. That's my fear, it's a really real fear. So I'm thinking that something modest that we know can fit, that maybe you don't have to take away when the town administrator walks in the door, because right now, we're talking maybe six, eight weeks, we'll have somebody in that seat. So I'm, I'm almost wondering why you continue to work as much, I mean, just, can you rein this in, other than $300 a week? I've gotten quite a bit of feedback that that's extraordinarily high stipend.
Okay, Dan, did you have rebuttal?
Extra hours, too.
Yeah, I just, on the subject of, you know, Kathy talks about budget and deficits, all right? I think where we left it was, all the bills hadn't come in and we don't have a final report on where we, where we ended up at June 30th.
Right.
If I'm wrong, correct me on that, but from what I heard, it was about $500,000 in a surplus, but there were outstanding bills such as legal and some others.
Trash.
So, trash, okay, but I would like to know whether or not we landed at zero or negative, brackets, red ink, or if we ended up with, you know, a surplus that goes to, you know, free cash, not that it's free, but it's, it's lab, they're, they're labels. And it ends up in our reserve fund. So, you know, how good was your budgeting? What's budget to actual? I don't know the answer to that.
Do you want to see if we can get an update for the next meeting on that?
I would like updates on budget to actual for June 30th, 2021, so we can deal with what was and what's realistic and whether or not we're tight $300 bucks a week or, you know, if we don't have it, I'm not for bouncing checks. But what I don't want to happen is that we're going to be penny wise and pound foolish here and then we find out we had a surplus of $200,000.
Okay.
What are we arguing about, pennies?
All right, we'll get, we'll get that, we'll get that figure. Bill, you have anything to add?
Yeah, if we're going to go down that road, I'd also like, because the next meeting will be September, I'd like July 31st, month-end reports where we are. That should be, that's well over a month beyond the month-end, we should have those reports by then. But I, I think what I'd like to add is what Selectman McDonald may be missing in this whole equation. And that is, prior to all this, we allotted 19 hours a week for that job. And at town meeting, we allotted six more hours a week to take up for a lot of that stuff that you're talking about.
Was it realistic?
Well, whether it was realistic or not.
If it fails, you got to adjust. So.
Well, I'm not done yet.
All right, go ahead.
So, let's start with the history. This, this job started with as 12 to 14 hours a week. You, oh, don't say no, it did.
Go back further, go back to Nancy.
Go back, go back further.
This is not the same job.
That's not the same job, we're not talking about the apples and, you want to talk, you want to compare apples and trolley cars, we can, but that's not a really good comparison. This specific job, this specific job that we're talking about right here today, we're not going to go back 20 years.
No, we'll go back to when I was on the board, four years ago.
The one we have today was posted for 12 to 14 hours a week. It has now morphed into 25 hours a week. I don't understand the need for an additional stipend, we've given additional hours to cover some of the additional duties that needed to be covered. So why we're giving a stipend which is in equal to or in excess of what we had given other folks with much more credentialed qualifications such as our accountant, just, I wasn't here for that meeting, but it, I guess it boggles my mind, I'm a bit confused by the additional hours we've given and now we have to give an additional stipend on top of the additional hours above, above and beyond the 25 to roll we allocated. I guess my question to everyone is, when does this all end? When does this all end? Or does it end in bankruptcy? I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I would say it ends when we, when we bring on a town administrator.
Mr. Chair, can I say, you said what I'm missing, so, you know, I'd like to fill in the gaps on what I'm missing.
Fill in the gaps.
Okay, I won't go back in time, but it tied capsule, I don't know, I've only been in town since 2005, all right? Prior to, was it 2015, 14? Nancy, okay, had a position, all right? Different position, yes and no? Was administrator to the Board of Selectmen. As far as I know, it was a full-time position. I was at a meeting, I get up and protested a $15,000 raise to the former finance director and I think Mr. Merrill got up behind me, all right? But it passed. So there was an allocation, there was a transfer of responsibilities from that position to the finance director. At that time, I thought, what are you paying a finance director, you know, X amount of dollars for that level of caliber to do administrative work? You know, it befuddled me. So that happened, so that shifted. So to me, it's logic that when the finance director leaves, that somehow those administrative tasks are left hanging there and who do they end up hanging on, her? So that job is more than whatever you allocated and I really don't care what level of oversight or undersight happened in the budgeting process, but it was unrealistic. So unless you're going to tell her on her list here, stop doing these things and just let them, you know, float around in space, then she should get paid for her time. And it's not a matter of caliber, okay? It's a matter of workload. So what am I missing, Bill?
Bill?
What you're missing is we've, we've allocated additional hours time and time and time again. And, and as Ms. Castren Ellis plainly pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, we've overshot that runway time and time and time again. So I guess my question is, when does it all end? I don't see it ending with the hiring of a TA right away because there's going to be time needed for that person to get up time needed for that person to get up to speed. I just, it seems to me it's double-dipping. We've got extra hours and we've got a stipend. So what is it? I guess it's both.
How many hours is the job? I mean, we've got to start with the answer and work backwards. What is the reasonable expectation of her position here in town? And I don't think we've delved into that and come up with it because there's still...
I think that's what you and Jason are working on.
We're working on it, but there are still items on here that can't be eliminated. So we can bring them before the board at the next meeting, and we can have that discussion on what belongs on here and what doesn't.
If you...
And if we take off, let's just say to your argument, right? And I'm listening to it. If there's five hours or 10 hours or two hours of work on here that she should not be doing, then subtract it. And don't pay her for it. But then who's going to do it?
And in addition, you've got to, if you take it away, you've got to find somebody else to do it.
Right. So I'm okay with addition by subtraction, but we haven't got into it.
I'll tell you how to subtract.
Kathy, with all due respect, he has the floor.
He's had the floor for five, 10 minutes.
We haven't come up with a solution to the work on this list. We have not. We've had several meetings on it, aside from the meeting, Jason and I had.
Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you. There is a solution. Allow the department heads to do their personnel. They know how to manage their personnel. Allow the department heads to do their own IT so they don't have to ask or wait for someone part-time to come in for a password. Empower our department heads to do what we're paying them to do, run their departments. We have only a small group here that are without an administrator, okay? Right now, that's it. Everybody else has a department head, so it's covered. We have an IT contract. They are doing our IT. If we need anything with technology, let the department heads go to them directly. I spoke to the head of the company. They're fine with that. That's fine. I'm not done. So the thing that's disturbing to me is I know for a fact that there are many employees right now who are going above and beyond doing extra tasks and more work because we don't have a town administrator, and we're not paying them anything. They're just offering and doing. And that's how it's always been. I understand that an hourly employee has to be paid for the hours' work, so I don't want to break the law. I would like it to be one way or the other. Either we say up to a certain amount of hours, pay the hours, or we say stay at the 25 hours and reduce the stipend to something reasonable. Because I can't see just giving a stipend for what if. It just, to me, it makes no sense. And the thing that I'm most concerned about is where are we getting the money for all this stipends? I mean, that's $1,200 a month. I think it's coming out of our town administrator's salary right now. I think that's where it's being deducted, and we have not voted on that.
We're going to get that for the next meeting.
We have not voted for that to happen. So this is really a Board of Selectmen issue. We need to really think about what's fair. If you're changing the job the way you sound like you're changing it to what was the administrative assistant, then you'd have to repost it. This job was posted at a very low level of hours and salaries. That was how it was posted, fair and square. If you change a job description significantly and change the rate of pay significantly, you have to repost it. So I want to be careful here. I want to be fair, but I want to be very careful that we follow the law and we also acknowledge that we have a lot of hard-working employees who are doing a lot of extra work because we don't have a town administrator, because we don't have a treasurer, and they're just doing the work. And thank goodness for that.
Anybody have anything new to add? Bill?
I just, I guess, to your point, picked up a lot of extra stuff, working extra hours. Are we not paying her for those extra hours? We are. We are. She goes above 25, she goes to 27, we pay her for 27 hours, right? She goes to 30 hours, we pay her for 30 hours, right?
At what rate?
At the rate contracted.
That's right. And there's some things on here that were just not anticipated at that rate, unless I'm wrong.
But for every hour she works, she's not...
It's paid something.
It's getting paid. We're paying the hourly rate above and beyond what was anticipated. So it's not like it's a salaried employee that's, you know, has a fixed salary, and time and time again, we're saying, geez, you know, we need you to go above and beyond, so we're going to take care of you because we know you're on a fixed salary. We can't pay you overtime, you're exempt. We can't give you more in your salary line because we can't, but we'll figure out something. So it seems in this case, we're doing both. We're paying the hourly rate above and beyond, the hour's set, and we're paying a bonus. I think I'm pretty clear on it. I have no further questions.
Well, it came before the Board of Selectmen when we were going over the warrant for the last town meeting. It was put in, there was an article that had been put in by an interim finance director to do a study on the wages and hours of personnel. It was taken out by the Board of Selectmen. And we could have jumped on Meramec that had the study done, and we could have come in at like half the price. But the Selectmen voted not to put it on, to put it off until we get the town administrator and let the new town administrator take care of it, to make sure that we're paying our employees the proper salary. If you look at the makeup of other towns the same size as Grove One, every single one of them has a full-time administrative assistant for the Board of Selectmen. And when you have a new town administrator come in, I think that you're going to see some of the salaries go up, and you're going to see some of the positions, and that may be one of them, where they're going to want to increase it, increase the hours to full-time. And there's been a lot of things that have dropped on her, Catherine's, shoulders, and she's done a great job with it. She gets back to everybody, limited hours that obviously that she can be here, but she's very dedicated, and she goes above and beyond. For instance, I think it was Wednesday night, it was almost midnight, I think it was, working on the, with the company for somebody to be here. Somebody had to be here when the IT people were in. So she took care of that. She prepares everything for us. And again, you're going to see that this job probably turns into a full-time job with a new town administrator, and salaries will probably go up on some of the employees. Anybody else got anything to weigh in on this?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So I actually, I have a copy of the Meramec study, and I know that there was a proposal put to us, and we were told, you better grab this now or you'll never get it again. Well, I called the company, and we could still get a great price to do the same study. We didn't lose anything by pushing off a little. But I also know that our Director of Planning, Conservation and Economic Development, is pursuing a grant for this study. So we could still have the study done for about $8,000. Good study. I've read Meramec, they did a nice job. Or we can see if our Director of Planning can come through and get it for us through a grant, and then we don't have to spend any money for it. But either way, it's going to get done. There was never an intention of this board to not do something like this.
No, it was my recollection. It was put off for the next, let the new town administrator or the town administrator handle it.
Well, yes and no. Yes, that was part of it. But the other part of it is that there were a number of proposals being thrown at us at the last minute that were totaling to quite a significant sum of money. A lot of consultant studies, and we didn't have much information on it, and we didn't know for sure what these cost. Right now, where we have an employee who's already pursuing a grant, and I've already asked the company that did Meramec what it would cost for us to do, and I feel like we have a much better understanding of what these studies are and what they cost. So I think we will have a study done, I'm sure, this year. And I think that, I want to point out for the record, that we also have an employee in the Board of Health who's been here, I want to say like 20 years or so, that makes just a little bit more than some people that have just come in the door per hour. Okay? So let's be sensitive to the fact that across this town, I mean, do you know the rates in the Council on Aging? Has anybody really looked at any of these other rates? Because I've got a glance. I mean, we're lucky that we have some of these people still working for us, and we don't pay them a lot. And so maybe we need to look at the big picture and not just pick out one position and leave everyone else behind. I don't like doing it that way. It's not fair.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? And the motion was to extend...
Can you indicate where the money, okay. I was going to say, where is the money coming from?
The motion was to extend the stipend for 30 days. All in favor of extension of the...
Where is it coming from? What salary line is it being charged to? You decide. You guys are deciding this money? You decide. Where's it coming from?
We'll have to get that from town accountant.
No, I think you should know. Where are you going to take it from? The salary line for the administrative coordinator? Fine. You know, we can replenish it later, but keep it in-house.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any, no further discussion? All in favor of extending the stipend?
I want to know where it's coming from.
All in favor of extending the stipend? All in favor? Three in favor. All opposed? Two. Three in favor, two opposed.
I want a written document from the accountant where this money is coming from, and I want us to vote this at our next meeting.
Well, we already had a vote. We already had a vote. It's extended for 30 days. We'll see if we can get that information for you.
I'm requesting an agenda item for the next meeting to identify the exact line item that we're charging this to, because I don't want the town administrator line drained or the treasurer.
Can you put that on the notes? Okay, moving on. Highway union contract. Jason, you and Kathy were working on that. Any update?
We have two dates in September, just waiting to hear back. Soon as we hear back, we'll hopefully have a meeting. We gave one date at the end of August, and the Teamsters representative was not available. So we've given them two more dates. As soon as we can move on it, we will.
Okay. Water and Sewer contract, the same?
Same thing, yep.
Same thing. Police Department contract, Bill, you were working on that, waiting for...
I've reached out twice to Jennifer Smith, the union representative, to let her know about the typos, that we're not giving anyone $81,000 if they don't take the health insurance. And they have not got back to me about fixing those typos so that we can sign it, they can sign it, and then we have a fully executed document. I did reach out to her again today, and I have heard nothing back, so I'll start hounding her.
Okay. That, I'm surprised we couldn't get anything back in a couple of weeks.
So am I. I called her that Tuesday right afterwards, too.
Treasurer collector search. I think Kathy, you and Dan were working on that.
Yep. We had a very good meeting with the candidate, and we had Sarah Hunter in, and she was able to ask some good questions and was able to fill the candidate in. So the next step is to have this candidate come down tomorrow to meet with the employees in our finance office, you know, kind of a meet and greet, ask a few questions. And after that, I think Dan and I just have to discuss if we're going to, you know, move forward on this. It looks pretty promising. It looks like it could be a nice fit. So far, the candidates are interested, and we're very interested in this candidate.
Anything to add?
I haven't drawn a conclusion yet, but the next step is to have her meet people in the department and get some feedback.
All right. Thank you.
That's my approach.
Thank you. So I know you've got a meeting coming up this week or the next week?
She's coming down to meet the finance office, and then Dan and I will want to do a phone conversation and kind of...
Okay, so we should have something...
Well, after week.
Couple of weeks? Put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's enough time, two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Council on Aging Van Update. I know we were sent some emails over the week. Oh, you have an update on that?
She came in before the meeting and asked to table it because she's not ready yet with more information in order to proceed further.
Oh, that makes it easy. Motion to table?
I'll second it.
In a second. All in favor? Table in this Council on Aging Van Update. Bill, opposed?
It's under all business. I don't think it requires a vote to table.
You want to do items not reasonably anticipated first before Selectmen's time?
Well, are we doing the old business? Are we doing the working hours of the town hall?
Okay, we'll go back to that.
Thank you.
Hours for the town hall. Let's see if we can get together, I think that's pretty simple, get together with the department heads and repost the sign on the front door, what the hours are, if there's any changes, as well as we can add it to the town website. I think that...
Well, we're the department head for all purposes right now for the Selectmen's coordinator and for the finance, so I feel like our office should be, you know, 25 hours, right? So 9:00 to 2:00 seems fair. 9:00 AM is when most people get up and get around and bother coming down here if they're trying to figure something out. So that would work out, except on the Mondays that we meet, then we keep Catherine here, you know, for several other hours. So what I'm thinking is, on the week that we don't meet, it's like 9:00 to 2:00, and then Fridays, it's only open till noon, right? So 9:00 to 2:00, Monday through Thursday is only, that's five hours, that's only 20 hours, that's only 23 hours. So is, I don't know, maybe leave a flexible two hours, flexible, to fill in on Monday through Thursday, depending on what's going on in our office. But basically have a consistent 9:00 to 2:00 and then 9:00 to 12:00 on Fridays. That seems reasonable then. On the week that we meet, I was thinking have Catherine come in later because she ends up staying here till 8:00 or 9:00 at night, you know? So maybe come in at 3:00 or 4:00 before our meeting.
I think she was in today at 2:00, 3:00.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to make it a 12-hour marathon day. I don't think that's a good workday. And I don't think anybody's really efficient after 12 hours. So on the days that we meet, maybe come in at 4:00, 4:00 to 8:00, is that fine? I mean, hopefully we'll be done by 8:00. That leaves an extra hour of leeway. So that Monday, on the weeks we meet.
Jason, you had your hand up?
Yeah, but she brought it up.
Yeah.
When she's meeting for here, we can't take all 25 hours here in town halls.
Yeah. And then once the town administrator is here, I mean, we revisit. I mean, I suppose we're going to have the TA sitting here. We don't have to have everybody here, but this at least would keep our office covered. You know, if people coming in looking for the Selectmen or have a question for us, there'd be somebody here.
Bill, did you have anything?
Answer questions.
That's in-house, you're talking?
Yeah, in-house.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Right.
All right, Dan?
On the nights we're here, to just shift the hours, makes sense, right?
They've been done regularly on the meeting nights.
Does it anyways?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have to set it in stone or just...
No.
No, because I want to post it on the door so that you know on the alternate, on the meeting nights, that the Selectmen's office will be closed in the morning and open by, why don't we say 3:00? So that there's one hour, at least one hour for the public. So 3:00 to 8:00 on the Mondays we meet. Every other day, 9:00 to 2:00, 9:00 to 12:00. It's consistent. It's an easy schedule to remember.
Um, did you hear the, you hear the, uh, schedule? No?
Nine to two, Monday through Thursday, nine to twelve on Fridays. And then there'll be two hours in there flexible, depending on, you know, other things that crop up.
Uh, go ahead.
Up to this point, I've been able to set the schedule according to my schedule that I need. Um, I'm asking-
Child care issues?
I do, yep. Um, so I'm asking if I can submit at the next meeting, I can give a, a schedule according to, um, you know, I'd rather do a couple of full days rather than split up, um, a little bit each day, if that's possible, if the board will let me do that. Um, I agree, really long days are hard to do a twelve, fourteen-hour day on Mondays. That's very hard for me. So, um, I would like it if it, you know, I could do afternoons on every other week or whatever. Um, but I'm asking if it's okay to submit a schedule for the next meeting for approval by the board of a schedule that will work with my schedule.
It, uh, sounds reasonable to me.
Um, well, actually, no, because we initially hired this position to be here, to be the face of the board of selectmen when we're not here. And initially, it was nine to twelve because it was just like fourteen hours. So I'm just following, I'm following the template of what we hired you under. So that's what you were hired under initially was nine to twelve, like fourteen hours. And then on our meeting weeks, I know we shifted the hours to the evening. Because I had that email from Denise on that.
Look, we, we've allowed, um, employees here at the town hall that have childcare issues, uh, to, to weigh in and, uh, you know, we, we've allowed others to, uh, to do this and work around the childcare issues. Uh, I know the kids are just starting to go back to school and, uh, I, I think we'd, I don't see any problem with, uh, doing the same thing here. We've done it for other employees and, uh, we should be able to do it for our administrative assistants. The work's being done. The way she's doing it, though.
No, actually-
I would recommend that, uh, we, uh, we table this and, and let her, uh, and let her do it. Uh, give us a schedule for the next meeting. Uh, I think that'd be respectful.
Second the motion to table.
Motion to table by Dan. Is there a second on the motion to table?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of tabling? Uh, three in favor, all opposed. One opposed.
I'm opposed.
Opposed, two opposed.
So the other-
Three in favor, two opposed. No further discussion on the table, after the table and motion?
The other positions that are already doing their job and working now, so that we now have the town hall open and I've noticed our assistant treasurer is in the office every day, our assessor is. So I wanted to make sure that on Fridays, the town hall is open to the public nine to twelve. There's no more remote Fridays. There was some confusion at the last meeting. Someone said that maybe, somebody thought it was still a remote workday and I wanted to make sure that we clarified it and we post on the door, um, that the town hall will be open Friday mornings from nine to twelve.
That will be taken care of. That'll be posted.
So do we need to vote that?
Well, we did take a vote to allow remotely originally on a Fridays.
That was during the COVID, during the-
So, uh-
Right.
We probably, uh, we probably should, uh, take a vote to, uh, eight to twelve on Friday.
Is it eight or is it nine?
No, I don't, I don't, I thought it was eight.
I don't-
Maybe it's nine.
Nine, maybe.
Do you know, eight or nine?
Okay, so make a motion.
Collector's office is eight to twelve as it's posted on the website currently.
So make a motion to have the town hall open Fridays, eight to twelve as it used to be.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll make, I'll, uh, second that.
Jason seconds it. Um, any further discussion?
The only request I have is, I believe we did when we opened up town hall.
Yeah.
But I don't think we properly informed the employees.
Correct. I think so, too.
So I want to make sure that you get a notification, everybody, that the hours will resume.
Right. And, and if possible, just, I would remove the thing from our town website in the front door that says that our selectmen's office is open from eight AM to eight PM because it's obviously not-
I know, I, I know I've been in here on a Friday morning and, uh, the town clerk is here, uh, every Friday.
They're here, I know.
Another one is very dedicated.
Yes, he is very, very dedicated.
Okay. Um, we'll get that done. Um, items are not reasonably anticipated. We did have something come up, uh, all of a sudden. It had to do with a veteran service agent. Veteran service agent wants a computer, uh, and to do some of his work right now. I guess he's been using his own home computer and, uh, we need to, uh, we need to take a vote whether we would allow him to, uh, get a, a town computer. Uh, and, um, do we have a cost on that?
Based on the last- Based on the last laptop that I looked at getting for the Council on Aging Director, it's about seven hundred dollars.
About how much?
About seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars?
Yep.
Where does our veterans agent come when he comes to our town hall? And what days does he come?
Uh, it, go, oh, go ahead.
He told me today when I spoke with him that he's here on the third Monday of every month in the evening hours. So I, I asked him-
But we're not open Monday nights in the town hall.
Correct. And I, I did let him know about that, um, but he said that once, when town hall is open on Monday evenings, he will be doing that now. He's been just doing everything remotely at this point.
He, he was always here on, uh, one Monday night, uh, a month and then, um, there was, uh, the veterans could, could get ahold of him by phone and, uh, and he would, uh, he would help them out, uh, like he was probably working remotely like everybody else was.
Right, but he works for more than, than us, right? He services a lot of towns, so-
I don't believe so. Not anymore. He retired. He retired out of AVO, I think he just does us.
I guess I'd like to see a, a letter or something from, tell me what days, because before, if we're gonna put a, a computer in here somewhere, I'd like to know when he's gonna be on it and all that. I just don't see- I don't, I don't understand. We've never bought a veterans agent, a computer, go take off and take somewhere else that I know about.
No, he'll stay in, he'll stay in the building.
And there's not a computer that he can use here? We don't have a, an extra computer?
I'm actually running out of computers, unfortunately. We had a, since the firewall breach that we had, they, they located several computers that need to be taken out of circulation altogether because they're, um, they're not supported anymore. So it's, it leaves a hole in our security.
Well, so if we're doing, I guess I'd like to see, let's have the IT guy come into our next meeting and let's talk to him about that and see what's going on on that. He said he has to come in and go over the contract with us anyway. We've never done that with him.
Good time to go over a lot of things.
Okay. Um, so was there a motion to, uh, oh, there's a, was a motion on the floor, wasn't there?
Where's the money coming from?
Mr. Chair.
Danny, go ahead.
He can have my laptop.
There you go, give it to him.
I barely use it.
Okay, there's a solution. Thank you for stepping up.
I come in here and ask for the handouts anyways. I'm not gonna lie to anybody.
Yeah, I turned my tablet in.
So if you wanna scrub my laptop, I'd rather have the veterans use it than me. And I'll just get hard copies if it's okay.
Okay.
And if there's something urgent I oughta know about, give me a call. I'm old school. I don't, I don't even like laptops. I don't own one. Actually, do I? I got a tablet, I don't use it.
Okay, uh, was there a motion?
I have computers at my office, there's PCs.
There was no motion, okay. So that solution has been solved. Um, selectmen's time. Jason, do you have anything?
Yes. Rebecca informed me that Merrimack Valley Strong has a new program to help small businesses recover from the challenges of COVID-19. Uh, the businesses get paired with an experienced business advisor who can help them navigate the government support programs, financing options, operational issues, bookkeeping, marketing. It will connect, and they'll connect them with specialists when they need it. The program's free and the website is W R M V dot com. Um, I believe Catherine posted it on the sign-out front and also on our website. Um, and they can also contact our Economic Development Planning and Conservation Department to, uh, to get forwarded.
Oh, thank you for that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um, give a shout out to our, our school committee. I did go to the meeting to see, uh, see them vote our assessment and what I, what I saw before that was a, um, difficult meeting for them, but handled very professionally, um, and very well. And they allowed a forty-five minute, um, public input time, giving everybody two minutes so that as many parents as wanted to could comment on the issue of masking or unmasking their, their children. And, and I just thought that the, uh, school committee did a phenomenal job. They extended their meeting to later hour that night in order to facilitate that and allow all the parents that wanted to to have a comment. It was good to see, um, that kind of transparency and, um, honesty and, and just letting people say what they were feeling and how they were thinking. It was a very well-run meeting.
Dan, do you have anything?
Yeah, kids are back at school today. Um, taught. I wish they would've waited till the day after Labor Day, but I'm not in charge over there. But, um, yeah, the kids, um, kids gotta wear masks. Um, I got mixed emotions about it, but, um, COVID's gonna stick around for a long time. It's gonna keep morphing, like Bill's commented on it. Wants to keep living, so it's gonna. So what's the end game? Are we gonna keep wearing masks? What psychological effect does that have on children? Um, I know we'd all like to get people vaccinated and make this thing go over, but, uh, I'm not so sure I want my daughter vaccinated. Um, Pfizer was just FDA-approved in the last week. That's a good thing. That adds a significant comfort level, um, for myself. Um, but I'm not so, uh, sure about long-term effects on, uh, children. So I just, you know, ask people to be respectful of other people's decisions. Um, I'm really not a top-down, you know, nanny state kinda guy. Um, I hear arguments on both sides and, uh, you know, people that kinda, you know, losing their patience and wanna impose it on people or have restrictions and ID cards and everything. I don't, I don't think that's the America I wanna live in. I understand people have a right to protect their own, uh, health and their interest and their loved ones, um, but freedom's worth preserving, too.
Thank you. Bill, you have anything?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's the same frustrating subject that I've been hopping on for quite some time and it's the, uh, agenda package. Why can we not get this out at a reasonable time? Now, I understand the email situation was down. I got a text at eight-thirty, eight-thirteen PM that the email was down. That was on a Wednesday, even though I had been getting emails all day, so I'm not sure what the issue was. On Thursday at five-twenty-one, I get a text that the email is okay. I don't get the package until Saturday at ten-nineteen. So I need to understand what the major malfunction is around here, that we cannot get these packages in an, in, in a timely manner so that we can review them. We can, uh, you know, prepare for them. This is just, I, I mean, if it's beyond someone's skill set, that's fine. Step aside and let someone that has the skill set to do it get it done. But now I'm getting emails from residents that's saying, is there a meeting? It's not posted. It's not on a website. It's not on the door. It's not anywhere. And I said, I don't know because I haven't got a package either. So what does it take to get the package done on time and get it out on time? It's all I wanna know. I've asked this question before. Unfortunately, I've got no good answer and now I'm back at it again.
Well, as, as you're aware, uh, the town email and the computers went down and, uh, so nothing was getting out. It went down sometime on Wednesday and the information had come up around six o'clock on Thursday. And, uh, your, uh, your packet, uh, if you had come into the town hall, was in your box where you, that you could have accessed it there. It was printed out and then there was an email that was sent, uh, I think it was on Saturday, that after the emails, uh, were sent out, or Friday, whenever it was, that the packets were sent out, that, uh, the administrative assistant came in and pulled the, uh, pulled the packets out of there, went, went, once it was sent out to everybody. So, but you, you certainly, you certainly must know that the computer system went down and, uh, couldn't get it out. Couldn't get it out the, the usual way. Uh, but did you, uh, did you call, uh, did you call the administrative assistant to find out if you could get the, uh, get a copy, which, which was here for you, but you never picked it up?
Well, I don't have to call. I got a text at Thursday at five-twenty-one that said the email is okay, but I don't get the package till Saturday at ten-twenty. So again, where was the communication that the package is here? I can pick it up. In all the years I've been here, and I hate to, to kill more trees, I've always asked for everything electronically, electronically. I can review it easily. I can print it if I want it or not have to print it if I don't want. Again, I, I, I hear a lot of excuses, Mr. Chair, but I don't hear a lot of actions that are gonna correct these things because they just continue to go on and on. It's almost at a point where maybe the board needs to be reorganized so that someone is, is, is responsible for this to assure that and ensure that these things happen on time week after week after week and not just happenstance, that sometimes we get it and sometimes we don't.
Well, uh, maybe you can, uh, answer the question for me because I, I don't know, but if, uh, i- if our, uh, email and our town website is down, how are you gonna get a, an email that, uh, your information is here? Did you ever think at the time of calling the chairman or calling the administrative coordinator to let you know that the paperwork was here?
I shouldn't have to do that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
That should be your duty and your responsibility as chairman of the board
Okay.
To disseminate that information. But again, I'll go back to the day and a half from the time the email was back up to the time I got the package. Explain the day and a half that just goes by with nothing. Nothing. Jeannie Christmas.
Go ahead.
Can't get a package until you post the notice, right? I mean, it has to be, the notice has to be posted.
Forty-eight hours before the meeting.
It was posted at eleven-forty-five on Thursday.
Well, within a reasonable time posting, that packet oughta be there, right? Otherwise, you can't go to posting, right? I mean, it has to be, that's kinda set in stone, right? What we're gonna talk about, right?
I would think so.
So within a, a few hours of posting, you know? But if the system's down, then you gotta go plan B and it just, you know?
But what you know-
On the other topic, somebody took everything on Saturday. If that's the best you can do, that's the best you can do. I mean, I got the texts on my, uh, cell phone saying, "System's down" and I, you know?
I checked my, my box here on Saturday and there was nothing except the agenda.
Yeah, I was, uh, I got, uh, I got the text that, that morning, uh, I think it was on Wednesday.
So did you hear what I said?
Why was it down? Was it hacked? Does anybody know?
I came in and looked in my mailbox on Saturday and I didn't have a packet. I just had the agenda.
Oh, and, and, hard copies.
It just, you know what?
That was after, that was after you received an email that-
What?
The administrative assistant came in and, uh, sent them out by email and had taken the hard copies out of everybody's box.
Well, why take it out? Usually we got both.
I have no idea.
I mean, you know, whatever.
You, you were, you were emailing it in and Bill wants it, uh, electronically and, uh-
But, Bill, when do you want it? The same day? Same day? Same day as the posting?
In all the years I've been here, in all the years I've been here, I always, up until just recently, I've always got the agenda and the entire package, skipping nothing. Everything that was on the agenda was in the package on Thursday. When I was chair, I spent an hour on the phone with Denise on Wednesday. We went over every item that was gonna be on or off. When we finished that hour phone call on Wednesday, I knew Thursday morning, the notice would go up, and by Thursday afternoon, I would have and everyone else would have the entire package, so that we could have four good, long days to review it, prepare for it, get ready to do our homework and ask any questions. It just, that's all falling apart, and now, I'm not only the one frustrated, I'm getting emails from residents, they're frustrated too, because they don't know if there was a, they didn't know if there was gonna be a meeting tonight, because they didn't see it posted anywhere. The only place it was posted was outside the town clerk's office, and if you can't get in here, you don't know that.
It was in the website, but in the wrong place.
I think you gotta post, and then you get the package.
Well-
It's a copper for horse.
At the time-
Either way, I wanna get it in a timely manner so that I can prepare.
You have the whole weekend.
Yes, and not a couple of hours.
I get it.
Okay, all right.
I get it.
Do you have anything else?
But it's constant.
I got a report before a meeting once. Didn't work that well.
Yeah, it was posted down.
It was posted properly.
I'm not saying it wasn't posted properly. I'm saying the residents saying they couldn't see it posting, and I'm saying, "I don't get it until Saturday morning." And if I'm not sitting on my email, which I am not on a Saturday, because I've got a ton of things to do that I don't get to during the week, then I don't see this thing until Saturday night or Sunday morning, and that puts me in this tremendous disadvantage to prepare and be able to speak to any of these items coherently, intelligently, and be able to be part of the conversation. And this is just not the first time. It's not the second. It's not the third. A pattern becomes, you know, a trend becomes a pattern, and a pattern becomes a habit. And bad habits are tough to break, and we're, right now, it looks like in a bad habit.
Again, how do you send the email?
Your Thursday, your Thursday, your email is up at Thursday, 2:00, 5:21. What happened to Friday, Mr. Chair? Don't tell me about when the email was down. I know when it was down, I know when it was up.
And it came back up on Thursday.
Right. What happened to Friday? We take that out of the calendar.
Well, did you, did you make a call to find out if it had been posted? No, you didn't do that.
So, you know what? If I'm chair, that's what I would do. And I would suggest if the chair had any, took any responsibility on his own, maybe he should've communicated that to the board and say, "Hey, folks and ladies, we have an issue. This is what it is. This is how we're going to mitigate that occurrence, so here's my Plan B." I received nothing from you or anyone else.
Well, I thought that we could take care of this at a mature level, and unfortunately, I can't get, I can't get down to your level to discuss this.
You can't get up to it, because you don't understand what goes on.
But I received, I received on-
What happened to Friday? Tell them what happened to Friday.
I received on Friday at 2:48.
Did you disseminate that to anyone?
What's that?
Did you disseminate that to anyone?
No, I'm talking about, no, I didn't. I have, this is an email that I received from you, and this was in your response to a constituent that indicating that hadn't seen the posting on the website of the town calendar.
Right.
And this was at-
And you responded to no one.
This was sent out Friday at 2:48, and at, Friday at 2:48, when you sent it out, you knew that the server was taken care of on Thursday. Well, let me read, let me read this disgusting email that was sent out.
You don't have to read it. I can, I can, I'll quote it to you. I am very frustrated, too.
I'll read it. You're out of order.
I'm out of order.
I, too, have become very, this is, this is Selectman O'Neill's response to one of the town residents. "I, too, have become very frustrated by this lack of timeliness with respect to getting our agenda package in a manner that allows us time to review and prepare for our meetings. It is a subject I brought up several times over the last few months without any success in correcting it, unfortunately. The ultimate responsibility lies with the chair. We don't need the play-by-play. The ultimate responsibility lies with the chair, as the buck stops there, and it is that person's duty to assure and ensure that these things are done on a timely, on time and done correctly. Unfortunately, in my opinion, we lack the leadership necessary to affect and address these inefficiencies. I defer to the current chair to make the determination as to whether the lack of 48-hour notice will constitute an open meeting violation, to which a meeting will need to be rescheduled." Phil, please feel free to reach out to me for any reason, if anything might be helpful. But what disgusts me is, at that particular time, you knew, because that was a day after, almost, almost 20-something hours, 20 hours after, the information, the computers were back up, you could've told them that the computers were down and that you would, you would make sure that everything was posted properly, and instead of slamming me and slamming the administrative coordinator, you could've, you want these things done in a proper perspective, but you didn't follow proper procedure. You could've contacted the chair, or you could've contacted the administrative coordinator. You didn't do that. And I'll tell you, this really disgusts me. I'm gonna be contacting the town council to see if you violated the labor laws, and a member was discussed, a member of, an employee was discussed without their knowledge in this to a member of the town. I'm also gonna contact the State Ethics Commission and find out if there's an ethics violation in this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take care of that. I'll do that. I'll follow up with both of them.
Don't threaten me.
I'm not threatening you.
It sounds like a threat.
I'm telling you what's gonna happen. Like I said, I thought we could handle this on a mature level.
You don't have a mature person right now.
The best of my doing, I can't get down to your level. Okay, that's all under Selectman's time.
Mr. Chairman, I did send you an email also asking if you could take some steps to correct getting these packets on time. I mean, when I was chairman of the school committee, I met with the superintendent every Tuesday on my way home from work. We approved the agenda, and it went out by clockwork, no matter what.
I do meet with the, either by phone or I come in, usually I come in to go over the agenda.
We haven't been getting them on Thursdays. I know, and that's been a bit, a little bit of a while of that. So that was my email to you, to just ask if you could please look at that and address it. It was, the agenda was on the town website, but not in the usual place, not on the calendar spot. It was kind of under, when you go to Board of Selectmen, because somebody raised the thing that, did this board, and again, I've only been on the board, what, two years now? Did this board at some point vote that the official posting had to be on the town website? I don't know the answer to that question. Our town clerk, I guess, is the only one who could answer that, but that question was raised. I think we oughta get an answer so we know going forward what constitutes a posting, because it used to be just this bulletin board and then something at the police station, but now with technology-
That is, that is following the law, is-
But the open meeting law changed. That's what someone told me, that it has to be available 24/7. I don't know this myself with the town clerk. I would suggest-
Again, how do you do that with the computer system down?
I'm asking going-
I'm already, I'm not a computer technologist, but I don't know how you can send out an agenda to all the members-
That's the chair.
If the computers are down and the emails are down.
What I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is going forward, can we ask the town clerk, what is this open meeting law requirement now, just so we, so we're certain? Because I'm not certain about what constitutes the posting right now. What makes it legal?
We can get that information, and just if I, Catherine, didn't we have a, a lot went on this week, but didn't we have a, was the town clerk out for a couple of days?
Yes, it was sick.
Was it out sick a couple of days or conference or something?
She was, she was out from Thursday to, she won't be until tomorrow.
Right, and the treasurer posted it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
There's always gonna be technology glitches, okay? Things happen, okay? So, far as I know, an open meeting law posting requirement, you have to post it in more than one place, so you have Plan A, B, and C. So if it's posted at the police station and-
I don't know if it is.
A constituent or, you know, then you come in, you have to look at a manual copy. But it has to at a minimum have the topics of discussion that we're gonna discuss and deliberate on, if, and if votes will be taken or may be taken.
Correct.
Okay? At a minimum. I don't know that there's a maximum. I don't know that it has to have the 100 pages with it, okay? Because you can come in and get a copy of that. But if that's the issue, whether or not all the supporting data has to be uploaded, that, I think it's copper for the horse. You can't, until you post, you can't upload.
Well, that's not uploaded to the website.
So is that what we're trying to get it? You know, if you're gonna post it on Thursdays, if that's our goal-
Yes.
If something happens, then Friday, right? And this is a domino effect. She got backed up on Thursday. I saw all the texts and everything. It seemed like a fiasco. Soon as you, soon as, it's best available time, soon as you can. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
As soon as possible. But there's always, for anybody out there, I think they can go to the police station. They can go out to the court board out here.
I don't think we put it in the police station anymore. That's why I said we should get a-
But it's on the board out here.
The board, but where else is it visible? I guess that's-
In the front door.
Oh, you put it on the front door, that's good.
So, I guess there's a public service announcement there. It's not just online. If you can't get it online, then yeah, it's lousy to get in your car and drive down here or walk down here. But you can get it. There's Plan B.
We beat this to death.
Thank you.
Thank you. Correspondents.
So going forward, though, we're gonna commit to the Thursday packet distribution.
Well, try. I mean, that should be the time.
Well, that's what we do. We just do it.
We moved on to correspondence. Resignation of Rebecca Alderman from the Town Administrator Search Committee effective 8/1921. Rebecca did a great job on there. We have a letter from Joe DeMore.
Yes, I saw that.
She did a fantastic job there. A letter regarding Pintucket budget dated 8/1821. We have that here.
Yeah.
And we have, we have an email from Joe DeMore of the Town Finance, Town Search Committee. We also have one that didn't, didn't get on there, I guess.
Mr. Chair, can I comment on that?
On which one?
Joe DeMore's letter.
Yeah, go, go.
What?
My understanding is, I mean, well, I think my interpretation of his letter was that the job is done. Well, I mean, I'm not gonna draw conclusions, but what if we needed him to stick around for some reason?
It was, I think that was alluded to in here.
So is that the Board of Selectmen's prerogative to terminate the charge?
If there's something that we need from them-
Procedurely, I'm just curious. Does the TA committee itself disband, or do we disband them when we hire someone? I mean, it seems premature that anybody says we're done. We're not done.
Well, there's two committees. There's the government's-
Search Committee.
Well, the search committee-
I'm talking about the search committee.
Okay, well, the search committee was given the charge for the search. That was their charge.
What if we don't like any of the three, and we say, "We want a new one"?
Oh, we want him to go back.
Then we, then we go back to them.
Yeah.
Then we give them a new charge?
Yeah. Yeah, come up with some more.
You're just, you're just gonna make trouble now, no.
I'm just saying, why don't you hang around a little longer, Joe and company? That's all I'm saying.
They will assist us in any way we need.
Lately, there's no trouble making on that.
What I would like to do, though, along those lines, though, is we were given, from the Government Study Committee, a fairly comprehensive outline of the town administrator position and how it would function, and we need that put into a contract form.
It has to be memorialized.
Well, no, we don't have a bylaw, so we need this, the elements of that that are critical to us, put into a contract by our town attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. We need to have that done, sooner rather than later, I would say. So do we wanna look at that document at the next meeting to know if we wanna send it to council and say, "Take this almost bylaw and make it a contract"? You know what I'm saying, right?
I think I do.
Okay, yeah. It had certain elements in it that defined the scope of authority for the town administrator in a bylaw, but this, we need it in a contract, because we won't have the special act or a bylaw in place when we hire this person.
You won't, so-
Yeah, so you want it in the contract.
I'm not arguing with you.
Oh, okay, good.
I agree.
So we should look at this at our next meeting, yes?
Yes, but do we need anyone on those committees' input on this at this point? That's what I'm saying.
Not till we look at it. We haven't looked at it yet. Let's look at it first, let's see if we have questions.
That's all I'm saying, is, Joe, not so fast.
Yeah, see if we have questions on it.
Okay, thank you. The last thing we got was, something was added just late, was a letter from the town accountant that the police department is applying for requesting funds through the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security-
Oh, the body-
-to establish a body one camera program. Police chief and his designee have authority to apply for said grant funding. Hopefully, they can come up with something, but it's just a letter notifying us that they are applying, going to apply for a body camera program, cameras.
That would be neat, Mr. Chairman, is to get an idea on just a fiscal year, how many, how much money and grants have we gotten this year already? I mean, we're doing pretty well between several positions in the town.